Rezoning application which has received first and second reading from council. However, at this stage before proceeding with the public hearing, we wish to bring forward the variances to council for consideration. Because depending on the outcome of tonight's decision and the variances, whether supported or not, we'll have an outcome on the number of lots that could be created through subdivision if rezoning is also supported. So the variances are for three panhandles, each with approximate width of 4.6 meters, as well as relief from the subdivision and development standards by law requiring frontage improvements, as this parcel abuts Worcesterwood Way East as well as Woodlands Road. Parcels currently zoned RU4 rural residential within our zoning bylaw and contains a dwelling accessory structure on the property. It's within the north Cecinos area that's designated as Gateway Residential in our official community plan, which intends to accommodate low density infill development with also the supporting infrastructure for this area. As well, the Gateway Residential can contemplate lot sizes of a minimum of 0.25 hectares in size. With this parcel, the current area is 1.53 hectares. So specifically, the requested variances, there are three proposed lots, proposed lots A, B, and C. And as I mentioned, related to that 4.6 meters. Presently, the zoning bylaw requires a minimum of six meters for any panhandle lot to be created for that access strip. And then if there's to be future subdivision potential of that lot, a minimum width of 20 meters. Presently, the panhandle that exists for the parent property is 14 meters. So at the time previously at subdivision, when the panhandle was created, a minimum of 20 meters was not provided. But this also recognized that Worcesterwood Way East to the north also provides for an additional access point to this property as well as Woodlands Road. As well, the request for relief is from the subdivision and development standards by law. So these are the standard requirements for frontage improvements along any roadways abutting as subdivision application. So this has a double frontage, a small portion at 14 meters I had mentioned along Woodlands Road, as well as the northerly boundary along Worcesterwood Way. When the application was circulated out, operations department provided feedback both on the frontage improvements requiring this as a standard. As well, Parks and Environmental Services had indicated that should the variance for Worcesterwood Way not be supported, that they would request at least a cash and lieu requirement be provided for Worcesterwood Way for an urban pathway which would ultimately extend up to the CDC Regional Park, which is shown in our Parks and Trails master plan. As well, a request to build the portion of Woodlands Road to the intersection of Mauch Drive. As well, if that is the intent of council tonight, staff would also request that a motion to that effect be passed, providing for the rezoning application to include a covenant, a section 219 covenant, that would also capture those development requirements. However, at this time, staff is not in support of these variances, given the concerns with additional density on the property and potentially six units that could access this single panhandle access strip, which would require a easement agreement to be registered that the district would be party to. And as to our experience with those each additional user of those access easements, bring additional potential for civil disputes, which the district would also now be a party to as well should that ever arise in future. Staff rather see that the zoning bylaw requirements be met, as well the requirements for construction of Worcesterwood Way, as that would also provide for another access point continuing along Worcesterwood Way and up and to connecting with Harborview Road, as that would be an additional corridor within the north Cecinos area as well. There's already land educations that have been taken along that portion. And so it would be staff's request that be continued on to realize that full buildout of that traffic area. So with that, staff is recommending denial of these variance applications. And the applicant is in attendance, should you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paolo. I'll now turn to members of council for any questions. And then we can invite the applicant forward to speak after that. We'll just see first if there's questions from our members of council for staff. And then there is also public input. We have received one letter that's in the package. So questions from members of council. I'll go to Councilor McMath first. If you have any questions, Councilor McMath, I know I'm not looking at you, but I'm looking at my screen.
I'd like to hear from the applicant first and then I'll take it from there.
Okay, thank you. Anything from any counselors?
No, I'd like to hear from the applicant as well.
Okay, Counselor Sapiro, anything from, okay, good. So on that note, I'll invite the applicant forward if you would like to speak. We do have this additional cooling unit in chambers today. So it's adding additional noise. We'll just ask everyone who's using the microphones, including members of council, if you can just speak a little bit louder and as close to the microphone as possible. I know it's a little bit restrictive, but just amplify. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Brown. And just remember to turn it on, the microphone.
Thank you very much. Let me just back this up a bit. Is it working? Nope, not yet. We tried it in the, yeah, but I wanted to back it up, those areas. Okay, all right, we'll start from there then. Thank you very much. I'm addressing today the five variances that went out in the proposal, in the variance notification to people, to the neighbors. There were some other statements made by Director Paolo tonight about parks and other requirements for the, for the the area of Worcesterwood Way East, which I'm not familiar with and did not, to my knowledge, go in the, in the package. So I'm addressing five basic variances tonight. First of all, I'd just like to say that this is the, and before I, before I start, I'd like to just make one, one statement if I could. I'd like to thank Matthew, first of all, for at the last minute getting the variance information to corporate services, just in time for them to send out the letters of notification to our neighbors. Colleen also informed me that the, that the, because we had two new lots, two new accesses to Woodlands Road, and Woodlands Road is 400 meters from Suk Road, we had to get approval from the province to access Woodlands Road. And she said she'd prepared the applications for us so that we could make that application. And I was concerned, of course, it would take a long time. Well, she called me the next day and mentioned that they'd gone ahead and made the application for us and gotten approval from the province in one day. So thank you very much, Carolyn and staff. So to begin, first of all, we're looking at an aerial view of Woodlands Road. And as you see, there's three lots there and they go down, all of them independently access Woodlands Road. So each one of them have access and that access is 4.6 meters wide. The, the property is bounded, as you say, by Woodlands Road. There's a panhandle. The panhandle is 75.5 meters long and the panhandle itself is, is 14 meters wide. The total area is 5,000, is 1,500 meters squared, 1.15 hectares. Looking at the diagram there, of course, the blue is the Cecinus Creek, which is a seasonal creek. The green line is the stream side protect protection enhancement area. And that's 10 meters from the, from the creek. These are all, by the way, surveyed, have been surveyed by our, our surveyor, professional surveyor. And the second orange line is called the additional tree protection setback. And what that is, that was determined by our qualified environmental protection professional who did a repairing study and said that there was additional protection needed for the tree root systems of the trees within the SPEA. And that totaled 15 meters from the natural boundary. That line, the orange line, also denotes a covenant, a provincial covenant, which said there could be no provincial, no permanent facilities built within 15 meters of the creek, the natural boundary of the creek. So what we're asking for again, these are the, these are the points that were raised in the, in the submission that went out to, went out to the, to the neighbors. There's, we're asking for a three lot subdivision and shared panhandle access for the new lots. And the relief from constructing road frontages improvements along the adjacent roads. That's Woodlands Road and the, the undeveloped road, Worcesterwood Way East. So when we look at the, let's see, there. Okay, I had some beautiful transitions for you, great things, point forms and everything, really sophisticated stuff. And now I got this. Anyway, okay, I'll roll with it. So this is Lot A. This is what we call Cheryl's Refuge and it's 2,840 meters squared. It's, that's excluding the panhandle. And as we said, the Woodlands Road access we're proposing is 4.66 meters. The building envelope, this is the building envelope that excludes all of the covenants and it excludes the setbacks required for an RU5 lot. So this is what you can actually, this is the, what they call the building envelope area that you can build within. And then, but then there's a maximum, maximal, sorry, maximum allowable building footprint of 800 meters squared. And that's an RU5 requirement to be 25% of the total lot area. And the total lot area includes, in this case, includes the, includes the, the panhandle. So that's the actual building footprint. The home footprint, we had been making lots of plans, but what's happened with the current economic environment, the value of our house has been declining and the cost of construction has been increasing. And so right at the present time, we're quite uncertain about exactly what we're going to do in terms of development of the property. Next slide. Lot C, of course, we call our sanctuary by the creek. It overlooks the creek very beautifully. It's our, it's our regional home that we're going to sell. The area here, the new area here is 4,460 meters squared excluding the panhandle. And of course, we're asking for the Woodlands Road access to be 4.67 meters. And this is looking north through Lot B to the house. Lot C, this is Lot C, what we call Christine and Dodd's Age and Place Retreat. This is our dream retreat. This is the area of Lot C that we think we would like to build our, our wheelchair friendly little rancher. Again, it's 2,700 meters squared excluding the panhandle. The access we're asking is 4.67 meters. And the building envelope is over 1,500 meters squared and the allowable building footprint is 832 meters. And again, our home footprint, we don't know. We originally thought of a home footprint of about 150 meters squared, which is far lower than the 800, but we at present don't know. It might end up in hooking up an RV there or something. I don't know. Okay, so the rationale and benefits for these variances, for these three variances. One, first of all, all three lots meet the RU5 requirements, the area minimum. The subdivision optimizes property land utilization. This is, this is basically the limit we have. We only have a certain amount of land. And this is the optimized infill utilization of that land. And all three lots have independent Woodlands Road access. All the lots meet the fire department's minimum driveway width requirement of 4.6 meters. And the shared driveway, and that means technically that all of the, all of the lots could have their own driveway to Woodlands Road. It would mean we have 14 meters of driveway and we'd have to tear down all the trees along the panhandle. The shared driveway, of course, mitigates all that. It preserves the, the trees and everything. And it is one shared driveway for all three lots and it mitigates the climate change effects. The shared driveway again meets the fire department's 4.6 meters width and the 4.6 meter height. I need to go back and show you one other slide. Yes, oops. This is actually the shared driveway. And what we did is along that corridor, the driveway, there's, there's 40-year-old cedars that have been planted by the original owners. And it's a beautiful corridor driveway. What we did is we created lines, we made lines down on each side of the driveway, which made the 4.6 meter width. That's our little dog Nella there on the left. And then we took a cleaning pole, which is 4.6 meters long. And we raised it up, up high. And we, we, what we did is we went down that lot and we cut any branches that were inside the 4.6 meters or were lower than the 4.6 meters height. So what you're seeing there right now is a, is a shared driveway that meets the requirements of the minimal requirements of the fire department to be 4.6 meters wide and 4.6 meters height. We, a number of years ago, we had somebody from the fire department come and show us what sort of trees we needed to cut. They had no problem with the kind of road, the road that was there. They showed us a number of limbs that we needed to cut and there was one tree further down that we needed to cut down entirely. So this has been looked at in years past by the fire department. And so that's, that's the, and finally, the, the, you, the current property subdivision utilizes the current hydro CRD water and Woodlands Road infrastructure. There's no new infrastructure required. And it increases obviously the tax base of the district and maintains the rural character of the area. The issues around easement and the question of easement is a question of, again, something in the future that you have to, we need to work with and it's impossible to anticipate, anticipate now what the future is going to look like. Right now, in terms of, in terms of building development, we're going to be very, very conservative in our, in our development of the property.
Mr. Brown, can you just pause for just a moment? We just need to let Counselor La Genes into the meeting so we can move him into a different waiting room. Sure. Sorry about that.
Counselor La Genes, I'm just going to put you into a waiting room. We're still dealing with the Woodlands application. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. So that's the first three variances that we're requesting variance on. The fourth one is, is the relief from the, the road improvements to Worcesterwood Way East that is outlined in the bylaw 404. And that, if you look at that diagram there, that comes directly from the standards. It means that you have to have a road travel lane of 4.25 meters. Then the, the actual swale boulevard is, is 2.45, two meter sidewalk. And then there's an allowance for streetlights. When we take a look at, at this, above Lot C is the driveway. Between the red lines is the undeveloped extension of Worcesterwood Way East. This, this driveway, which are this roadway, which goes from the, along the edge of our, top of our property, as you see, it goes diagonally across Cecinus Creek. It's 86 meters long. The estimate cost, rough estimate cost of developing that, that road is over $100,000. Basically, as if, if this variance is not approved, that kills the project. We will not be able to develop the, the property in any way. I'll address in a few minutes the, the question of, of having an alternative access through that property. Again, we would have to develop that property in order to have access to Lot C from that property. And again, that would be over $100,000, which would be impossible for us to afford. I wasn't aware of any other improvements to that road that we were, we would be required to do. And so again, I, that, that is the situation with that particular road. This is what it looks like on the ground. It's 400 meters squared of forested area and with some cedar trees over two meters in diameter. The tree that's in that picture there, that's our dog Nella and our dear daughter Cheryl in the picture. That, that one cedar tree that you see there in the picture is, has a, has a total diameter of over, of over 2 meters at, at, at diameter breast height, which is the DBH height. And it's huge. They're incredibly tall. Down on the left lower corner is the, is the actual Cecinus Creek, which is a seasonal creek. And way up in the far right there, right on the edge of the picture is a pink ribbon. And that's, that's our boundary. That's our lot line. Oops. Now, if you look at that, where does the extension of Worcester Way go? Well, basically it goes to our neighbor's property. It dead ends there. There are other properties, I assume, up further up, up Woodlands Road. As the, as the director said, there is some allotment. But I know on the immediate, at least three or four properties, there is no allotment. And basically that, that road is going to dead end and probably dead end for a long time. When we looked at the transportation master plan, we couldn't find Worcesterwood Way Extension in the master plan. The master plan, I believe, is for 10 years, is it? So what it means is at least for 10 years, we're going to put in $100,000 or somebody's going to put in $100,000 and just have it sit there. So here's, here's the rationale for doing it. First of all, it's a road to nowhere. There's no immediate benefits and it's unlikely to be extended for many years. The relief avoids compromising Cecinus Creek SPEA and property restrictive covenants. There's two covenants on the, on the creek. One I didn't mention is a fisheries covenant, federal fisheries covenant, which would be an incredibly, quite a challenge to, to overcome. The relief is consistent with the proposed climate change action plan. And I think we need to start looking at these things in light of that, that climate change action. It, the relief avoids prohibitive costs, therefore contributing the feasibility of the property development. Again, if it, if it's not approved, then basically we can, I'll go home. We don't need to even apply for the rezoning. And finally, the province's response to our repairing report done by our qualified environmental professional, which was submitted to the province as required. The province stated, "The rezoning proposal includes a rationale for using a shared access driveway to avoid unnecessary crossings and SPEA loss. This approach is supported by the provincial environmental mitigation hierarchy." And so basically the province said, "No, don't, don't do that" to, to Worcesterwood Way Extension. That's our rationale for relief from the frontage road improvements to Worcesterwood Way East. Now looking at the next one, which is relief from Worcesterwood Way or from Woodlands Road is the same thing. Is the, we have a 4.25 travel lane, then the, then the swale of 2.45, I believe, and then the two meter sidewalk. When we look, this is a, this is a picture of Woodlands Road. As you see, it's a beautiful rural road. It has, it's treed on both sides and natural vegetation. And of course, our trees there are part of that. The road itself, right around our area, through this area, is actually 4.9 meters wide, the total road. So when we look at these improvements, we take a look, first of all, at the, the frontage road, the, the travel lane, the 4.25, actually ends on the other side of the ditch that, that is beside the road. And then inside that is the swale, which requires cutting down those trees, both three cedar trees on this side of the driveway and some maple trees on the other side of the driveway. And then there's the sidewalks, which will be inside the driveway at the end. And they'll all end at the neighbor's property, which is driveways and things like that. And neighbor's properties, the houses are right close to the road. So the actual sidewalks will be, will be about four meters from the edge of the road. And then when you look at, when you look at it, the sidewalk, there'll be a one meter long sidewalk on one side of the driveway and a six meter long sidewalk on the other side of the driveway. Because the driveway itself at that point will be about seven meters wide. To enter into the shared driveway, we need seven meters to allow for the, for the, the cornering of the vehicles. The frontage road improvements aren't practical and they provide no immediate benefits. It would be hard pressed to see a sidewalk four meters from the edge of the road, a one meter and a six meter long sidewalk, four meters. And as far as, as far as increasing that, you would have to somehow have changes in all of the properties down on either side. The urbanization is inconsistent with the real designation in the new OCP. The relief avoids cutting down any mature cedar trees and maple trees. And the relief maintains rural natural forested character of Woodlands Road and is positive environmentally and supports the proposed district climate change action plan. And finally, the relief avoids unnecessary costs. Again, that, those costs would be quite prohibitive and the concept of affordable housing would, would disappear for us. So in conclusion, thank you very much for your consideration and time for considering these approval of variances.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Brown, and as well for the PowerPoint and just your patience as we deal with the virtual meeting setups. So I'll now turn to members of council for questions. You wanted to wait to hear from the applicant, so here we are. Counselor McMath, are you there? Do you, would you like to start off?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, other members of council, Counselor Bettes?
Yeah, I'm still trying to get a clear picture. The panhandle width right now is what, 11.?
14 meters.
14 meters, eh?
Yep.
Now, when you say that you need this 4.75, is that the one half the road and then the other half of the road is another four? Is that, that's what it looked like when you're drawing?
Which one are you, are you talking the width of Woodlands Road? Are you talking the frontage road improvements?
No, your panhandle road that you want to run up.
Okay, the panhandle road is a total of 14 meters. Each, each driveway, each lane up the panhandle is four point, just over 4.6 meters wide. So that adds up, when you add up, that's the, the thing, it adds up to 14 meters. So the total width is taken up by the three properties. Each one has a, has, so that no property is, is land bound. They all have access to Woodlands Road and it comes out to 14 meters.
Yeah, I might have, I was just trying to get it in my head here.
Yeah, looking at the math, it's, they actually, the, the roads are 14.66, 14.67, and 14.66.
Okay.
67, and you add them up, it adds up to 14.
If you have to get a covenant from your neighbor on that, so would you have to take, to widen even more to make this? You said you'd have to get.
We wouldn't be able to.
Okay. You want to?
No.
Maybe, Mr. Paolo, can you answer about the covenants?
The access easement agreement that would need to be registered against the title would involve the district and that would be something that needs to be in place prior to subdivision being created. And anytime if there need to be alterations made to that covenant, the, the district would always have to be party to that agreement because we, we need to sign off to ensure that that easement is in place, as well as ensuring that maintenance is also maintained over time to ensure that the fire apparatus and any other emergency vehicles can go through that location. So it would be all parties signed on to that agreement that would have to work together to ensure that that area is clear of obstruction.
So the easement is for the three landowners on this parcel.
That's right.
That's where the ease, okay, that's, I was getting a little confused with that.
Yeah.
In order to go to the narrow, they all have to agree to it, sign an easement, they were party to it.
That they can all access the, the shared driveway.
Yes, that's correct. So typically when there's a minimum of six meters provided, that is sufficient that for a driveway to be installed to meet any emergency service needs. And if there was ever an issue, it would be dealing with only that property owner. In the instance of an easement, it would involve any party signed on to that easement. So three in this instance.
So if, if this four points, if the six is adhered to, what is the ramifications for you again?
If the six is adhered to?
Yeah.
Well, it would be, it would be, basically there'd be access to two properties. You would have 12 meters out of the 14 meters would be, would be accessing two properties. So you'd have two.
So you'd lose a lot.
We'd use a lot, but also we would lose every tree along that panhandle and up the side of the property. You're talking about over 40 trees, some of them cedar trees that have been planted 40 years ago by the original owner. Basically, you, you're going to put in a highway.
So under the present circumstances, if we adhere to the rules that, that we have laid out in the past, it's not even this council that laid them out, your, your three lot subdivision would only be a two lot subdivision?
Well, we, it would bring into question the whole thing. It would, these are sort of for us go no go decisions. We would have to go back and really reflect. It would change our whole rezoning application. It would change everything in terms of our plans for the property. The property was, is, the current property is owned by ourselves and our daughter equally. And the idea of the subdivision is to sell the original property and have her have one lot. And the idea of the subdivision is to sell the original property and have her have one lot and us have the other lot. So that we are, we treat her fairly. Um, without that, again, uh, we would have to rethink the whole thing.
And uh, just, just a little clarification is when you quoted the transportation master plan, uh, there, there is a, a portion of it that says in the future to uh, plan for connectivity between the streets.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed, you don't want this ending and another one starting here.
Mm-hmm.
So uh, that uh, Westerway uh, would eventually come into being with, with their present transportation master.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't even mention it, it, it.
Would eventually, yeah. It could eventually, and the question is, is should us as an individual owner pay a hundred thousand dollars to develop that road now, which you're, you're saying at least for the current transportation plan, won't be for ten years. Uh, and then uh, the question is, is that each person along that way is going to have to put a hundred thousand dollars out for that property? And to me, that's just seems quite unjust. Uh, and basically, if you look at it, the other thing is thinking that there's a driveway access. What has happened with the provinces, they've said basically that the uh, idea of putting a road diagonally across the Sessina's Creek is something that they do not support. And you will have a real challenge with them, and not only them, you, there's a covenant by the province. Uh, there's a seven point five meter uh, covenant with the federal per- uh, Fisheries Department. Uh, and my contact with them was extremely unsuccessful.
Yeah, well, I'm struggling with this, so.
Okay.
Counselor St Pierre?
I have a few questions around the shared driveway.
Sorry, counselor, can you just speak up a little louder?
I, I will try. Uh, I have some further questions about the shared driveway. Uh, one of them is actually directed uh, through your worship to staff, to Mr. Paolo. Uh, you were laying out in brief some of the uh, legal risks uh, that would be incurred by the district if the driveway is shared. Could you please expand on that and maybe reiterate some of that? Because I have to admit, I'm awfully confused.
Certainly. So typically when a municipality considers uh, access easement agreements, they're usually for the instances that a landlocked parcel has existed. And so to gain access to those properties, it can only do so through another private uh, property. And those access agreements recognize physical and legal access. In the instances where there's a legal road that's been established, the first practice is to ensure that access can be provided off of that legal road, whether it's been built or not built. If it isn't built, typically it becomes a requirement of the developer applicant to provide for that development. In this instance, we have a si- situation where there's actually two roads uh, abutting the parcel, so two uh, potential options for access. Based on the applicant's configuration of the lots to gain access, it requires multiple variances, which create this access easement scenario. So in doing so, if the district is to support this, we need to be party to that access easement agreement to ensure that that access easement agreement is never removed from title. So by having us as party to the agreement, we ensure that we need to sign off for whatever reason in future if it needs to be removed. Otherwise, we can prevent that from having the other three property owners remove it without our knowing. With that, uh, the development comes a- along indicating whether it's three single family dwellings or potentially six units in the form of duplexes on each lots, that would then be gaining access through this easement. So as additional units beyond the first become developable, you're dealing with multiple parties with additional challenges that arise in the future. And this is typically experienced over a, a longer period of time where civil disputes arise. And because the district is party to that, we also become party to some of those disputes and helping to resolve it. So rather than explore the option of just finding dedicated indic- uh, independent access points where we would only deal with one property owner, or if a strata corporation was developed where it would be this responsibility of the strata to deal with the access, we're now party to these uh, legal disputes should they arise. So it creates an expectation that we are there to solve those problems should they arise. And also it can create a cascading effect where as multiple panhandles develop, there will be more people seeking opportunity to have these access easement agreements in place. And our, our main focus is to make sure that legal disputes are minimized as well as emergency access is provided in an unobstructed fashion where uh, the smaller you have these accesses, the more potential there is uh, for obstructions to be created and then the responsibility of who's going to maintain these accesses as well.
Thank you. Um, I think, Mr. Brown, you had.
Yes, I just wanted to comment that first of all, we have no objection to the, the city being um, party to this, party to the easement. And easement, we felt was very simple. It's just simply sharing the, the one driveway and the access to the one driveway. Um, it maintains the properties to be fe- be simple and, and independent in terms of trying to look down at the future and, and say this as a, as a potential problem. Again, um, there's a question of risk and what that risk is. And we can't answer that, and I don't think the director can answer that either. Terms of it saying that gee, other people would want this if we get it, again, that's a question of what I call the precedence trap. And um, you're, you're approving these variances for this one property and this is what we're asking for. I think the uh, the way that this would work, um, again, we've been advised that it is, easements are a pretty standard thing. And uh, we revise that this is a way to go for our property.
Uh, further question through your worship to Mr. Paolo. At this point in time, it sounds like uh, because of human nature, uh, the district would prefer not to actually take on legal liability in getting involved on signing off on an easement because in the future, there's no guarantee. And based on historical precedent, uh, a possible likelihood that there might be some issue and that the district get dragged in. Is there some legal recourse to simply disassociate ourselves from that liability?
When accessing uh, or when entering into those agreements, it's uh, very challenging to minimize uh, that risk. The way to minimize that risk is to not entertain it in the first place. So that's typically why I, I answered your previous question initially was indicating that where physical access is present, that is the primary route to go. We understand that there's limitations with the cost of development to do so. And sometimes that's where each parcel is unique and it's, and it's physical constraints, uh, whi- which in some areas it is possible and other areas it costs a little bit more. Um, but to defer that and then enter into an easement agreement always raises a challenge uh, for staff to support these types of scenarios, just given that there, there's alternative options. It just, it, it's a little bit more money um, to, to develop those options. But that's the cost associated with certain types of developments based on each physical constraint to a property.
Okay, and uh, if I may continue?
Yep, Counselor McMath, I see your hand. And it's just for those who are not speaking, could you please turn off your microphone if you're not speaking? Thank you, just the background noise.
Okay, I have to admit that in looking at the various maps and so on and so forth, I was unclear about the access from pre-existing roads and what that might look like. Do we have any actual drawings of what that might look like or is that? And would that still allow three lots or are we still limiting, are we basically limiting the lot as Mr. Brown has suggested?
So the, the, the proposed access, so ba- based on a zoning regulation standpoint, two access points via panhandle could be uh, provided from uh, Woodlands Road. And then the third access point would need to come off of Worcesterwood in order to comply with the panhandle requirements. Uh, so that is where the third lot would gain access off of Worcesterwood or some other form of um, configuration where perhaps two accesses come off of Worcesterwood. The limiting factor is um, the cost of that development based on the creek and what that requires in terms of uh, road infrastructure to protect the repairing area. And then the associated cost with building out that portion of road as well to gain access.
Okay, and I think Mr. Brown has indicated the province probably wouldn't entertain crossing uh, the street. So that's not necessarily an option that's open, is what I'm gathering. Mr. Brown?
That's my understanding, yes. That was a, that was a formal response to the repairian study that was presented to the province. And that was their, that quote was their specific response.
Thank you. I think I have other questions, but I'll, I'll.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor McMath, please.
Is the fire chief in?
Yes, Chief R- Ryder is here.
Um, through your worship to Chief Ryder, what has changed with Suk Fire in regards to this property from their previous visit to now?
Uh, through your worship to Counselor McMath, I can't honestly answer that because I was not here at that point in time. Um, I'm just, as we sit here tonight, I'm trying to take it all in and understand it, um, so I don't really have a specific answer for you. And what I'm seeing, I have questions, I guess, and um, now is not the time for me to ask, so we'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
This is just a follow-up. If you, if the fire department still has questions about the property, how is it making a recommendation?
Uh, sorry, um, through your worship to Counselor McMath, uh, Deputy Chief Barney managed this particular um, development review, and he's not here tonight, so I can't really comment on that.
Uh, okay, through your worship to staff, how many easement agreements like this are there within the District of Suk currently?
I, I don't have a, a total number. Uh, I'm not familiar with any recent developments that have incorporated these types of easement agreements, uh, specifically for the reasons that I had previously stated. Uh, and, and I don't have a, a ledger that keeps track of these types of easements, had there been any uh, registered in the past.
Cause my follow-up question to that is going to be, how many legal disputes have arose from those agreements within the District of Suk?
Pre- presently, I'm, I'm not aware of how many illegal disputes have arisen. We typically have uh, indications between uh, landowners in uh, building stratas where the, there has been a challenge. And we've indicated that they're civil and that the district cannot um, be involved because we're not party to them. So um, typically with planning practices, we try to avoid these just because of uh, past experiences uh, that other municipalities have, have experienced. I, I can't say off the top of my head in, in recent memory, um, where this has arisen. Other civil disputes are just related to areas that uh, uh, are agreements for other matters because we try to avoid these access easements.
You mentioned that other municipalities are having issues with these easements. Can you give us some examples?
I've worked across uh, the country in numerous provinces and I've experienced these instances in, in portions of the eastern as well as uh, in Alberta where there's have been these challenges. Um, as well, uh, closer to Victoria, there, in, in more of the rural areas, there have been uh, challenges with some of the older uh, rural subdivisions as well that have incorporated this. And then as new landowners come in, um, not realizing these easement agreements exist and some of the requirements that are put in place, they're looking at how they can be remedied and whether the municipality was party to that agreement or not indicates how well those matters can be resolved. Um, there are some instances where the municipality wasn't party to those agreements. And so uh, the, the outcome has just been left to a civil dispute.
So locally speaking, those municipalities haven't really been impacted?
They haven't been impacted in the sense where um, if those agreements have been put in place and they weren't uh, party to those agreements, the outcome was then just left to the property owners, which typically in these cases, one property owner sells and leaves um, to remove themselves from that dispute matter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so a question that I have, Mr. Paolo. So in the event then that these variances are not approved, uh, and let's say Mr. Brown decides to sell, someone could come in then and continue with a three lot subdivision and achieve the six meters per lot by basically cutting down all the trees? Because then it would have to be an eighteen meter, because it's six meters per lot, so eighteen meters total. But because of the trees, that's, that's the restriction to why it's fourteen. But like to get, could you do eighteen by simply cutting everything down?
That, that would not be possible because the maximum width that's provided for access off of Woodlands is the fourteen meters. So starting off, there's already not the minimum uh, eighteen meters that would be necessary to meet a six, six and six uh, independent panhandle access strips. So it's already starting deficient of what the minimum panhandle access width needs to be for three lots.
Because that's the width of the property?
That's the width of the existing panhandle that gains access off of Woodlands Road is fourteen meters.
The existing panhandle is fourteen meters?
Correct. And so the applicant is, is seeking a variance to reduce the minimum six meter panhandle requirement down to four point six meters. So then they can fit three independent panhandles uh, based on the, the fourteen meters that they have.
Unless they acquired additional land from the adjacent neighbor.
They would, yes, they would need to consolidate additional lands into their property to meet the minimum panhandle requirements.
So in theory, someone could actually do that, could, could negotiate with the adjacent neighbor to punch in a larger easement to achieve three lots. But that would be removing every, like cutting everything down basically. But it's doable in that regard.
Yes, given that uh, this subdivision had occurred previously as, as Mr. Brown had indicated, um, if there were to be another subdivision reconfiguration of, of the applicant's lot as well as the other adjacent lot to Woodlands, there could be some form of additional lands consolidated to meet the, the minimum six meter width.
Or they could punch, go over uh, Sessino's Road and, and clear a driveway access that way to the uh, Westerway by going through the SBA then, or over, through it, over, under it, whatever, over the creek.
That's correct. Given that it's a legally uh, registered as a road now, but just undeveloped, there would be a number of steps to uh, obtain a necessary clearance, uh, but that would be one alternative scenario as well.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Your worship, just do, to comment on a couple of points. First of all, to have that access from Worcester Woodway would require us to develop Worcester Woodway. So it would be the hundred thousand dollars to get ax- to get one driveway access to one lot. So it's, it's practically infeasible. Uh, in terms of the, in terms of the width and the access to the, from the fire department, I met with the deputy chief the other week and determined with him uh, the, the width and heights requirements for, for the driveway and why they needed that kind of uh, distance. And that's why we went ahead and actually created that distance in the shared driveway to show that it is quite doable. Um, and again, if, if we wanted to have two lots and six meters for each lot, we would have to take down all of the trees. Uh, because uh, you, you would have twelve meters in the, that would have one meter in each side. Wouldn't be able to fit any of the trees in one meter, you'd, you'd have to take down all of the trees. Uh, and uh, so uh, that's where we stand.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other follow-up questions from members of council before I go to the public? Okay, see nothing at this time. Uh, Mr. Brown, thank you. Uh, we may call you back after we hear back from the members of the public. And counsel, I'll just draw your attention. We have already received one letter uh, that's in your package, uh, supporting the variances but not keen for the Westerway part. So on that note, I'll look to see if any members of the public would like to comment. It would be specifically for four point one, the development variance permit for five, six, eight, six Woodlands Road. This item only, thank you. And please just turn on the microphone, introduce yourself. We just need to know the municipality resided, not your address.
Herbaldane, three one one eight C Otterpoint Road, C R D. The Land Title Act dictates what approving officers do for subdivisions. An approving officer gets to decide whether or not district's bylaws meet a standard that he has to abide by. And approving officer can say that, that uh, road dedication can be done out of gravel. It could be just dedicated. It doesn't have to be to a bylaw standard that we have here at the District of Suk when you're only creating three lots. The whole idea behind having a independent person who does our subdivision approval process is that they get to decide through provincial legislation and through district bylaws, what they think is fair and equitable for landowners. I mean, if it was up to the district, they would take full road dedication. They have full roads built for anybody building any subdivision at any time, anywhere. But obviously, if somebody's building a twenty lot subdivision, they have a lot more money to spend on road dedications and roads than somebody doing a three lot subdivision. As far as the panhandle end of it goes, realistically, the same approving officer should be saying no to the four point six meters and just saying dedicate road. And when you dedicate road in a subdivision, doesn't necessarily mean you have to bring it up to a subdivision standard in our bylaw. You can dedicate road. If you go around Suk here, there's a bunch of roads that either have gravel or they have chip seal on top of them. Because at the time, the approving officer of the day and, and before we were incorporated, it was actually highways that did it. But they would do a little minimum. You look at, at. but they would do a little minimum. You look at Woodlands Road itself, it's a very minimal width road, it doesn't even have the seven meters that we asked for as a minimum, even in our own bylaw. So when they first did Woodland Road, it was a rural road, a bunch of big lands and farms and stuff, and property owners, so they devised what they thought was fair and equitable of the day. So in this case here, there could be a lot more done to make this work than what's on the table. Somebody just has to get there and decide maybe through an approving officer rather than through the engineering department or planning department, come up with something that works and something that works in the Land Title Act. These guys are only asking for three lots, so at this point, I don't know why we're expecting somebody to build a a standard road for three-lot subdivision. That's just fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haldane. Other members of the public?
William Wallace from Sook. Just a quick one. Is any consideration given to strata arrangements for this development? I know Harborside has taken a view of multi-unit development on a strata with our own roads that are our own liability. So that's my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Good question. Well, I'll flag that, and after we've heard from other members, we can get a reply from that. I think the applicant has an answer. Other members of the public on this item tonight? Mr. Brown, would you like to return?
Again, the advice we received was that the easement was the simplest way to go. It maintained the the properties to be independent and fee simple, which improved the value of the properties. Going to strata would require that the current property, the current building would be brought up and subject system and everything brought up to current standards, which again would be prohibitively expensive. We just, we had an accident at our house where we just had, we just had to repair our power lines, and the cost of that was very, very high. Thank goodness, we were covered by insurance for that. But just again, what we've been advised is that it's far easier, both legally and economically, to go to a go to a simple, fee simple for just sharing the driveway. That's all it's about is for sharing a driveway, a panhandle driveway. It isn't more complex than that. Again, the advice that I received was that that is a very simple easement that other people have done and live with quite comfortably, and if you look at look at Woodlands Road, at least down the way from the road, there's a road with three houses on it and other places that have that throughout Sook. Just getting back to Herb's comment, this is not something that is a a scary thing to take on.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I'll call for a final time if there's any members of the public that would like to speak on the item. Okay, so that concludes our public input session. So I'll turn this back to members of council. Do you have any follow-up questions for staff? Or the applicant at this time? Ms. Counselor Betos?
Yeah, not being a subdivision expert, this question is for, through you to staff. If we have to go back to the drawing board, is it possible to do a three-lot subdivision in some other configuration with this property? I'm asking a lot, but I mean, it's, you know, if this applicant doesn't get this variance, then he's either a two-lot or a reconfigure, I think it was said. Is it possible to reconfigure this and get three lots out of it?
So there was two comments regarding the reconfiguration, one which the mayor had raised about consolidation of additional lands to get a wider access for panhandle. That is one, one option that could be considered. The other option, which the applicant indicated would be cost prohibitive, would be to gain access off of Worcester Wood, just with the associated costs to develop that roadway. So that is another option to consider three lots to the parcel.
So there still is options, it's just that it's a pricier one.
That's correct.
Tommy, okay, thank you.
Counselor St. Pierre McMath, any follow-ups? Go ahead, Counselor St. Pierre.
Just very quickly, I hope. I'm still not clear on why we have a six-meter as opposed to a 4.6 if the fire department requires 4.6. So what's the rationale for the six-meter? What are the advantages?
My understanding is the 4.6 meters is the absolute minimum for the actual physical traveled area. The six meters is the actual wider portion of the legal titled boundary. So you establish six meters similar to any other private laneways that get established in subdivisions gaining access to like rear alleyway, rear drive. So six meters is the is the minimum legally, and then the actual built physical portion, that's where the 4.6 portion was being discussed for proper and free movement of the emergency apparatus. And then also along with that, you'll see in the referral comments, is the ongoing maintenance to ensure that that area maintains unobstructed. So there were still concerns from the fire department indicating that the 4.6 meters was the actual travel area, but it also needed to have continuous clearing and maintenance to ensure that area never becomes obstructed. So having that wider area, the minimum of six meters decreases that potential. It still is there, but it decreases it by having a wider area for travel.
So this wouldn't just be a matter of pruning the cedars a bit further to get six meters?
Sorry, can you say that again?
This wouldn't simply be a matter of pruning back and moving backwards from where, right now, the existing roadway, from what I could tell from the drawings that the applicant made, was showing 4.6 meters and everything pruned back to 0.6. But we're concerned here about maintaining that six meters on a larger area that would have to be continuously maintained in terms of pruning and so on. Is that, is that my understanding? Clarification, just trying to figure this out a bit.
Yes, a larger area that maintains that minimum 4.6 travel access.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McMath?
Through your worship to chief, is, would this be considered part of fire inspections? To ensure like that they're doing the maintenance on the roadway, driveway?
Through your worship to Counselor McMath, I've just been doing some review here, and as I said earlier, Deputy Chief Barney has met with the homeowner. Best practices for this situation are what Mr. Palo has stated. We need those road widths and we need them to be maintained. Usually, if they're not maintained, that presents or prevents us from having suitable access to the property in the event of emergency. So one would hope that the homeowner would maintain it. However, there is no guarantee. The other thing, the driveway would need to be able to support our apparatus from a weight point of view. So all these things have been looked at. I'm basing this on an assumption that Deputy Chief Barney went out and worked with the homeowner, and he thought it was okay in that regard. So that's all I can really say at this time. So to answer your question, one would hope that the maintenance was done by the homeowner to allow us access at any given time over the course of the year.
Of course, is it incorporated in your fire inspections?
Necessarily, no.
Okay, what's the, I'm gonna try to say this, what is the width of the widest fire apparatus?
That's a good question. I would have to get back to you on that. I don't know.
Thank you.
I think the applicant might have an answer to that, so I'll invite Mr. Brown back. But while he's coming to the microphone, is it fair to say, though, that around Sook where we have several panhandled that generally we want to encourage everyone to maintain their panhandle driveways? Like, we don't inspect those, or do we? Like, there's a possible risk everywhere where we have trees growing together. Everywhere, right?
You're correct, your worship. It's something we don't regularly inspect. It just, we just don't have the time to do that. Having said that, it is best practice, and if we move forward a little bit into the future, we're considering purchasing apparatus that allow us to access difficult driveways, but that's not the case at this point in time.
Mr. Brown?
My purpose of meeting with the deputy chief was to really find out why it required this kind of width for the for the thing. The actual width of the fire truck, I was told, is eight feet. And what we're talking about for the 4.6 is 15 feet. So that's already almost double the size. The reason, the rationale that was given for that was that they needed to put down stabilizers when they actually do their firefighting, they ruin it stabilizers on the side, and so they do need that kind of room for that. And again, and the idea to go to the 20 feet or six meters was simply to be an insurance thing so that to minimize any chances of maintaining or of branches going over, but to me, to add, you know, essentially, the 4.6 is 15 feet and the six meter is between 19 and 20 feet. What you're adding on is about four, five meters, five feet on each side. And for that, for example, on our property, would require really quite a significant limbing of the trees and of course, for some trees, it'd be taking them down entirely. And the point is, is a picture that I showed of our property with that, with that, with the changes we have been made, with that property has been used, that road has been used since the beginning, since 40 years ago, and it worked quite well, thank you very much. Recently, the, it's had trucks of all kinds go forward. Recently, we had a boom truck from B C Hydro come up the driveway, and they're huge, with huge booms on them, and made it up the driveway just fine, thank you very much, turned around, never made any complaint about the driveway at all. And so it's a question of practicality and and just, you know, making it work. What we did in previous year, a while ago, we invited the fire department to come up and show us which trees to to limb, to make it wide enough so it'd be safe. And certainly, I'd invite the fire department to come up and look at what we've done already. You know, we've already made it 4.6 meters wide and 4.6 meters height.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay, so I'm seeing no other questions from members of council. I'll turn your attention back to the, there is a recommendation in front of us which is essentially to deny the variances, as noted here in the report with the rationale provided. So I'll look to council to see if anyone is prepared to move this recommendation or to move something else. Those viewing online, and I'll, it's quite lengthy, so is it necessary to read these? No, it isn't. Okay, it is printed and it was provided in advance, but essentially the staff recommendation is to deny the variances. And the action to date is we're at second reading on the rezoning, correct? Yeah, okay. Counselor Betos?
Yeah, I think we need to get this out on the floor, so I'll make the motion that council will deny the issuance of various requested development permit BLN 01629 for the proposed development of 5686 Woodlands Road, which would vary the following, the referee, yeah, good, as noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McMath. I see your hand now. Are you seconding the motion?
No, I thought I had it up first. Yeah, I'm not seconding that motion.
Seconder first is Counselor St. Pierre prepared? Okay, nor am I, so there's no seconder for it, so I'm going to withdraw this. Thank you for moving it. It's just to advance it.
I just wanted to get it going, yeah.
Yeah. Counselor McMath, sorry, I didn't see you there, so I'll go to you if you have a motion.
It's okay, but tough job. I was just gonna make the motion that council approve the issuance of variances requested with the development permit, et cetera, et cetera. Do I have to read the whole thing?
No, I think it's just replacing the one word, so it is that council approved the issuance of the variances and the rest is all the same.
Correct.
Yes. We may need to break this. Do they have to be broken out because of some of the other pieces? It's very long, so it's when we change language here. No, I think that's fine. It's just the one word. Yes, I'm just trying to figure this out. Do we have a seconder for this? Counselor St. Pierre is seconding, so I'll go, it's on the floor. I'm just going to ask our staff just to confirm, though, that with the change in that, that the language flows with all the recommendations?
Just had a quick look, and it does appear to.
Okay.
And we understand the intent. We need to tweak it, we will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll go to Counselor McMath, who moved it. You can speak first.
Sure, just for that first portion, should it be present tense instead of past?
On where, sorry?
That council approved instead of approved.
Thank you, yes, nice catch.
For me, it's pretty straightforward. You have to triage what's the most pressing issue there, and we constantly talk about affordability and and the environment, and I just have to say kudos to Mr. Brown, I believe it is, for your presentation. It was so well-articulated and so logical, and I know it's a tough spot to get up there in front of everyone. It feels like a really intense job interview, but you did a fantastic job. The points that were made around the rural area, how it's not in the T M P, all those pieces, the affordability, excuse me, the affordability component in regards to that hundred grand, and then how each of those pieces for the through stops at the neighbors. So for, for it to become a priority, it doesn't make sense to me, so yeah, I'm happy for this to go forward.
Thank you, Counselor McMath. I'll go to Counselor St. Pierre.
I agree with what Counselor McMath has said, but I would also add that the $100,000 for the buildout on the road makes sense if you're actually making a significant profit on the property, and you know, that there's a balance that happens there. That's why staff wants this sort of thing to happen, because once this has gone by, you have three lots, you can sell one of them, make a good buck. We don't necessarily have a road for the future, and future taxpayers can potentially have to pick up that bill. So at this point in time, it's really a matter for council to decide, are we taking on this liability? Are we basically saying, staff, it's not your job to take on liability, it's your job to point out liability to us? And then it's our job to decide whether or not we're willing to take that risk and potentially take a beating for that in the future. That's the job we actually sign up for, but that's not theirs, and they've done an amazing job on this file. And I'd like to just make sure that's clear, because they've done great work on this. They're trying to protect the interests of taxpayers and of the council and of the district. Having said that, I don't see the need for the buildout in terms of sidewalks and so on and so forth in that particular area, based on the pictures that I've seen and so forth. I do think that protecting the trees along that laneway and protecting the character of that laneway makes sense. And for the many reasons that Counselor McMath has put forward, I'll support the resolution as it stands.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Betos?
Yeah, it's one of those ones where I have a lot of sympathy for the the landowner, what he's trying to do, but basically, you know, we're trying to make something out of something that wasn't possible, and it should not have been sort of proposed in the first thing. The first thing that I object to is that the staff recommendation is to deny, and they're our experts, and we rely on their expertise to do these subdivisions and to work these out for us. I'm not an expert on that, so I rely heavily on staff. So I'm not happy with that. Possible legal liability, once again, I don't think we try desperately not to put ourselves in those positions. I don't have a problem with the subdivision up there. I think it is possible, and sorry, that might cost another $100,000, and I hate that going on, but that's not us. And again, connectivity in the transportation master plan, that connectivity of going out onto the other road, Worcester Way eventually, that would align with the transportation master plan, and we pay a lot of money for these plans and have experts do them. I'm also a little concerned with the fire department. They're not solid on this. I mean, I look at the recommendation, and that's what I'm going on here. And then I get conflicting messages from somebody going out there, and yet, this is the recommendation I get from the fire department on this sheet in front of me, and they don't like jive. So that bothers me a lot, and maintaining the corridor. I lived in this area for 32 years, and I tell you, the trees grow like weeds. And, you know, I know in my place, I just turned my head and the bushes have grown out another 10 feet. So I have problems with that, and the last thing I have problems with is precedent, and I heard it said that, you know, And uh I heard it said that, you know, each each of these are individual and that is true. Uh but if we keep going over staff's head and they're doing their job, then uh I can see people say, well, you know let let's not work with staff, let's just go to council and uh you know, get it done that way. So uh that way, I'm sorry to say to Mr. Brown that I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, counselor. Um so for myself, I I appreciate all the work everyone's done on this. Um it's it's tough for staff. They're trying to we've put both bylaws in place that we expect them to follow, which they do uh and have provided solid rationale for why we are meeting on these today. Uh I also thank Mr. Brown for his presentation uh and providing that rationale. Um I'm going to support the motion though and the reason why is because we do, I respect our bylaws and the expertise of staff, however, as we develop in certain areas, we have to take into, for me, it's the individual and unique nuances of the land. And that's why I don't feel, I'm not worried about setting a precedent because we have to view every parcel and every scenario uniquely on its own as they arise. In this case, there is a significant spia that needs to be protected, so I don't like the idea of pushing a road through uh to Worcester Way because I think the it compromises protecting that that area. Uh this is also our rural gateway. It's a rural area and changing by clearing out trees and the like would destroy the character. Yes, they come back, you can replant and you can grow, but that's the change and that's what we're hearing uh in various places around Sioux is the loss of the character and many of that is through natural assets that have grown and have thrived in these particular areas. Woodlands is getting busier and people are using that to cut through, but that has nothing to do with this particular property. Uh we do need to find other ways to keep woodlands and those that are using that road safe uh and find ways to, because people are cutting over to Harborview and the like, and I've received some calls about that, but having frontage improvements on one particular section and nothing uh while it may benefit the owners as they come out of this, it it won't for the duration as they continue down harbor uh down off to Harborview, say. Uh so that is, but that's another discussion that will take place in time. Um perhaps one day we will look to see more development in this area that will require a full buildout of Worcester Way and other connections in that area. Uh but in in terms of when we look at the draft O C P, it's about protecting those natural areas and finding other places to locate the density. So that's where it gets challenging. It's it's the nuances and the individual character of the land. And so I think others have spoken. I know that um our fire department and we are looking to keep everyone safe and accidents and incidents happen and our crews need to get there as best as they can. Uh but every rural section of our commu- of our community is going to face that unique challenge uh which is why we need to look at different type of vehicles and different ways to service those lands. Um there could be an accessory building and another suite added into this that would potentially achieve the same density and the same need to to access that in in perhaps a more um crowded area. Yes, it's true, the applicant could complete all of this and sell every parcel and someone else could come in, so I'm trying not to attach uh personality to the land because that is possible, uh as it always is. Uh however, it's it's the same scenario there and I would I would look at it the same. Um we do have civil disagreements that arise over all sorts of things from, you know, we denied an expansion of a daycare or two because of the noise of children. I heard about it with the concerns of our sport blocks and the impact on the neighborhood. Anytime we do something, it creates friction when there's a change and so we just need to deal with those incidents as they arrive, but I certainly respect the rationale and why staff brought us to this point here. Um but at the same time, I'm I'm content with what I've heard from other members of council, including Counselor Bettes, because we need that variety of perspective here uh as well as what was provided by the applicant and those that have members of the public that presented either today or in writing, so I'm content with the motion as it stands. So I'll look to see if there's any further comments for a second time from anyone. Um otherwise, I will look to call the question. So seeing no movement, I'll call the question and all those in favor. And opposed is Counselor Bettes, so the motion carries on a three to one, so thank you. And uh that concludes this item and we'll move on. Uh but in the meantime, we, oh, Counselor, um sorry, Ms. Machada?
Um your worship, if somebody could please text Counselor Elijah Ness, he left my waiting room and he's not part of.
I got it.
All right, so we'll look for Counselor Bateman and we'll thank you, Counselor McMath, and we'll just um maybe take a short break while we wait for members of council to return to the meeting. Okay, everyone, it's uh eight twenty-five, so we'll go back into our meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. And we'll start off, we're back to item five with this adoption of meeting minutes. And but there is an issue with the special counsel July nineteenth is pulling the June twenty-seventh meetings. So I'm going to look for council then that the following minutes of the council be adopted as circulated, which would be June twenty-seventh regular council and July eleventh regular council, as those are the minutes we have. So moved by Counselor Bateman and seconded by Counselor St Pierre. Any questions or corrections?
Yeah, just one on the page seven of fifteen for June twenty-seventh of top line, it states uh there are numerous there are numerous recommendations um emerging from the committees. And in fact, there were only eight and what council was looking at were were several, so I I'd like to see the word several instead of numerous in that instance.
Okay, good catch, so we'll change uh make that change so that it'll numerous for several. Thank you, Counselor Bateman.
Is the clarification, your worship?
Yes.
Several to me is is three or four, two to three, three or four. Isn't that right?
I'm I'm not a good dictionary.
That's my understanding of it and there's eight, so wouldn't that be numerous?
Well, Counselor Bateman, maybe you could.
I check it on my phone, but I thought several was uh couple is two.
My microphone, microphone.
It states under council discussion, there are numerous recommendations that are possible for this council to complete. Now, we identified two and those were the two recommendations that we forwarded in the meeting, so uh whether it's there are a few recommendations or we could state specifically, there are two recommendations that are possible for this council.
I'm okay with several, but I heard the word eight, that that's right.
Eight were the number of recommendations that were brought forward by the various committees at the committee of the hall of July, June twentieth, so there were eight.
So that's the numerous or is that the several?
Counselor Bettes here. I should have stayed out in the hallway.
I know, I just, it was interesting.
The key is to, you know, my 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 pet peeve is the lack of quantification when it's so easily done and the use of words like numerous, which implies multiple.
I think several will fit.
Several will work.
Yep. Okay, we're we'll go with several. I'll make that ruling as chair. Anyone could feel free to challenge me on that. However, we'll just call for a vote, please. All those in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, that brings us to item six, which is our delegation section, so I would like to welcome Mr. Herb Haldane forward. Uh his topic is landscaping issues and bylaw four oh four. Uh presentation from Mr. Herb Haldane, the Sioux Builders Association. Mr. Haldane, you have five minutes to present and we'll turn on the timer for you.
Oh, thank you very much. So the whole reason I'm coming forward on this and it came to my attention uh about a month ago. Um we're trying to do frontages on lots of these new houses that are going into Sioux and have been building houses for a number of years in Sioux and we've always taken it upon ourselves to uh to irrigate the boulevards and to plant trees, but we've also planted shrubbery, whether rhododendrons and things like that because the topography in Sioux is up and down and all over the place. So at that time, when we first started doing it, we were paying the five hundred dollar highway use permit fee. And for the most part, if you had to go, uh it was even asked back then that you go grass all the way through the boulevard, but it doesn't always lend itself to going grass through the whole boulevard. A lot of the times because the lots tear us up, you just pick a spot, you build a a garden, then you go up again, you build another garden because you're coming down a hill or or your driveway goes up a hill. Well, the bylaw is pretty inflexible. It basically says sod to the to the end of the boulevard and street trees. And we have to do a street tree anyway because that's part of the the deposit, but now we're charged a minimum of about twenty-five hundred dollar deposit for a highway use permit, sometimes more, depending if they think that it warrants more money. Well, the deposit in in my eyes should be based on all the expectations. So if they want to hold back because you didn't plant sod all the way and they think that the shrubs that you put in there uh are aren't part of the bylaw, well, then they could take a portion of that twenty-five hundred dollars and say, listen, we're gonna keep five hundred dollars because you didn't follow the bylaw. Well, they're not flexible like that. They want the entire twenty-five hundred dollars or you have to take out your garden area and plant grass. But you could be planting grass, you're not allowed to have a driveway six percent, but you're allowed to plant grass over six percent. So the whole idea behind bylaw four oh four is it should always have little clauses in there for the flexibility of being able to make stuff work, because if you look at all our subdivisions, they go on up and down hills all over the place and when when builders now are starting to to irrigate the boulevard as well as their own yards, there's no point in leaving the boulevard out and then you're only watering the lawn on the property. So the the homeowners are taking responsibility for mowing and taking care of the entire boulevard anyway and the district of Sioux staff doesn't have to mow it, they don't have to weed it, it's all up to the property owner, so there should be some flexibility on what you can do with that property because there's lots of good gardeners. I did send a bunch of pictures in to Mayor Tate and showed about uh what types of of gardening can be done and things like that. And then um some of the landowners that I talked to who are building the same subdivision I'm building right now, they're trying to make everything look really pretty. The the market now has taken a real hit and prices have dropped, you know, as much as two hundred thousand dollars overnight on some of these houses. So beautifying them and making them look look really presentable is a big deal with a lot of these builders now and lots of people like to come in and see more of a low maintenance garden mixed in with a grass area and so on. So I think there's room in bylaw four oh four to have a little clause. As far as the street tree goes, there's a clause in there that says if you have one of those uh one-off lots that only has a very narrow roadway and you have to do a six meter driveway and there's not enough room for a street tree, there's a little clause in there that says street tree may not, may or may not be required if you don't have enough road frontage. Well, sod should not, should may or may not be required if you can prove to staff that you can build a beautiful garden site or you can tear us up, you know, rock, because a lot of times they're putting uh riprap rock up because it's such a steep hill and then they plant little shrubs and plants and stuff in between the rocks and everything else. The point is, if you talk to any landscaper in Sioux, they've had to do this type of stuff. If you go up into a lot of the subdivisions that are even three, four and five years old, you'll see that all kinds of the boulevards have all been chewed up by the landowner or the the property owner and they've turned him into something that they like and that and that's that's what they want to have on their property or on the boulevard in front of their own house and then they take care of it. And then all these systems of irrigation and stuff pay off for them. I mean, to to use their own water, their their own equipment and everything to take care of all this stuff, that they should be at least involved in the process of what they can do. So that's why I came forward tonight. I know there's other uh builders and other properties that I've talked to that either wish they could have come forward or I wish they'd have come to the meeting, but some of the stuff after we talked about it was too late and everybody's got kids and busy schedules and so on, but I I hope that maybe something could be pushed forward, a committee of some sort or anything in the future and we could maybe get some flexibility. I mean, the staff guys that come out are really good people and they're really easy to talk to, but they basically say their hands are tied. They they like what it looks like, but they say their hands are tied, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Haldane. So Mr. Haldane did share a number of photos with me, but they're still on my phone. It's just sort of transferring them off. Ah! Probably the ones that are right here. Well, thank you for printing those. Never mind. Um Counselor Bettes?
Yeah, Mr. Haldane, um I agree with you. Uh there should be something in there with a little bit of flexibility. We're in a new era now with uh sometimes lawn isn't the most the best thing to put in, sometimes with a drier climate, uh less watering is good. We use up, I mean, we've got a great reservoir out there. But uh in a lot of communities, uh We use up, I mean, we've got a great reservoir out there, but in a lot of communities throughout the United States, they've run away with saw it all together. So to specify something specific, I, I don't think it does anybody any good. So a little bit of flexibility, I don't know how that would work, but I'm sure if we task staff to come up with just something that would give a little bit of flexibility on case by case basis, I'd be happy with that.
Thank you. Counselor St. Pierre?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I like the idea of actually specifically rain gardens, because we know that we've got, you know, issues with storm, stormwater runoff and so on and so forth, especially when we've got, you know, heavy inclines, it makes sense to actually use the rock and put in rain gardens. So I actually wonder if language like an approved landscaping plan or something along those lines from, from a landscaping company, but I'm, I'm sure that staff can come up with appropriate wording that could modify the bylaw and actually make it more suitable and, you know, better for what we need. But I would agree that sod is not always the way to go.
No, I would agree with that. I'm just going to ask staff, like, what would be the mechanism just to make an adjustment so it's not so absolute? Mr. Schaefer?
Your Worship, because this language is codified in bylaw 404. Resolution to direct staff to examine the issue of altering bylaw 404 and bring back a report to council for the next meeting might be appropriate. That way we can have a look at it and, and bring you back recommendation. I know there are issues with consistency of, of presentation as well as consistency of maintenance standards from different, different presentations of sod and rock, and so that, that presents difficulties for maintenance. And I think Mr. Paolo has a opportunity, has something to add to that as well.
If this is something that council would like to consider as part of our strategic priorities, updating subdivision and development standards bylaw 404 is one of those items. It's currently being looked at by the engineering department, so if, if council would like to make a motion to that effect, they can at least consider that as part of the review process when they bring forward a compiled new bylaw 404 with those additional revisions, and then they can speak to the reasons for or not including this request. So I think if, if there's at least some direction for that consideration, they can look at that as they go through the drafting of that bylaw.
Okay, that sounds good. Can we sort of capture what Mr. Paolo and Mr. Schaefer's sort of looking at a hybrid of, of what they both said there? Yeah, like I think a, a report at the next meeting is a little bit, little intense on Mr. Paolo, so, and knowing that the bylaw is under review, it would be a good time to sort of add that to that particular review as it's occurring. Because I, I agree as well, because often, you know, a homeowner will come in and just redo everything that's there and put it in what they like, which makes sense. So everyone's done that. So I think the flexibility and just the location wise, it makes sense. In some cases, we've seen very attractive rock gardens because of the, the microclimate that would exist there. Rain garden would be another, depending on the location, right? And so having this here, I just don't want to overload Mr. Paolo, but I, I do appreciate that this should be captured and, and something we work on.
Well, keep in mind too, your, your downtown core, it doesn't have grass in all of its boulevards, it has stone and rock, and even the roundabout itself is all shrubbery and trees and bushes, and your, your median in the middle of the road is, is all different plants and flowers and shrubs and stuff. And it looks fantastic, don't get me wrong, but the whole idea that there's a different standard for the municipality as there is for, for people and homeowners and stuff sets a, a different type of precedent as, as Al talked about earlier. So really, you want to get on the same page. If you get a landscape person who comes in and does up a plan for you or something, and they make it look good, I mean, I think that's what we embrace. Something that's done by people who do this every day. It doesn't have to be a landscape architect, I mean, those are thousands of dollars. But we've got a lot of local landscapers who have a lot of talent, and you've hired a bunch of them on here to work at your own staff, and they've got lots of talent as well. So again, just, we have to count on the people that are available to us that are going to do a good job.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Haldane, for presenting tonight. Counselor McMath?
Is this request actually feasible for staff? Because at our previous meeting, which will probably come up in discussion a little bit later as well, is that there is going to be work that gets shelved due to the OCP requirements now? So is this actually feasible for staff?
Where this sits though is the review of the bylaw, so that's where it's not as imminent as it's, we're not overloading staff. Like, that's where when Mr. Schaefer said the next meeting, I was a bit, I don't know all that, but here it is the review of the bylaw, which is scheduled to occur.
Okay. And then I would just also love if the Suk Builders Association could send their recommendations on what those amendments or clauses could be incorporated into that, that would help with providing flexibility for property owners.
Could that also be done as we actually review the bylaw? Or maybe I'll just ask staff, when you actually get to that, will you be reaching out? And hopefully we'll be able to have more consultation as we go through that review?
Well, I guess I'll make two comments. I'll probably answer your, your question there. So one, in terms of any concerns with staff workload and, and whatnot, a large function of the subdivision development standards by law rests within the operations department, specifically the engineering division. So they're looking at that in addition to their other projects, so that shouldn't be an issue. I don't have a specific timeline of when that's coming forward. And I, I would encourage that if there's anything that's available now, that it be shared with staff so it can be considered upfront as we go through the drafting of these bylaws to either begin that dialogue to address the, the pros and cons of some of these suggestions. And then again, with the operations department, I'm not sure specifically what their consultation process looks like. But like with many of our development bylaws, we do seek to get that wide audience input through that, but initially getting a draft available so that we can then start that conversation.
Okay, great. So the motion here is that council direct staff to consider adding flexibility to bylaw 404 or 404 with respect to landscaping requirements during the review of the bylaw. So look for a mover by Counselor Beto, seconded by Counselor St. Pierre. Anything further on the motion from anyone? No, no, no. Okay, I'll call the question then, all those in favor, and, and opposed, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Haldane. Okay, so moving on is our presentation, item seven, report of the chief administrative officer. So over to Mr. Schaefer, please.
Nothing this evening, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. So we're moving along to our public question and comment period. So I'd like to invite any members of the public that are here today to speak on the agenda items. It'll be all remaining items, the variance headed zone section. You can ask questions about minutes, but otherwise it's specific to anything else remaining. We have 10 minutes set aside for two minutes, up to two minutes per speaker. Ms. Shata?
I'll just, the council procedure bylaw actually prohibits speakers from speaking to the minutes.
Okay, but you can't ask a question about the minutes?
Question, sure.
I meant question. Okay. So would anyone like to address council tonight on any items on the agenda? Thank you all for being here. See movement, thank you. And please just introduce yourself and let us know which item you would like to speak to.
Hello, I'm Susan Belford. I live in Suk, and I'd like to address item 10.1, the Climate Action Committee Recommendations. These are separate from the recommendations that council already dealt with and will be dealing with again. This is specifically what I'm wanting to speak to is the, therefore be it resolved that the District of Suk commit in the budget planning process to hiring a full-time climate action coordinator. It's kind of a no-brainer, I think, given that there's a lot of work to do, there's a short amount of time to do it, and there is money available from the province to hire somebody to move forward with this. And I would think that it would be a very useful thing for council to make the decision to go ahead and do that so that the work can begin, instead of leading this decision to the next council and waiting for an additional four, five, six months. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Other speakers this evening? Come on up, please.
Michael Chagnier from the Highlands, but I own the properties in Suk. I'm the licensed nominee builder for Mars Construction Management. I own the newly constructed 2007, 2009 Stoneheart Lane. Those are the pictures that you guys actually have, not, so we're part of Herb's. And I'm speaking in regards to the bylaw 404, schedule three, number 25. In the, we've been building here about 15 years locally. And in that time, we've never had a security deposit held back due to issues around satisfying the highway use permit as it relates to the landscaping of the frontage. So why all of a sudden is there a desire from the Suk Engineering Department to enforce the requirement of the highway use permit, especially when builders and developers like us are trying to do more than the bare minimum? Since the municipality is not responsible for watering or maintaining the boulevards, why would it punish those that are looking to take on that task and improve our neighborhoods? I urge you to take a look at the examples I've provided, which are my recently completed homes, 2007, 2009, and 2016, Stoneheart Lane. And when looking at these examples I've provided, you'll see that the soft scape, soft scaping to the right side of the driveways are a small sliver of space on an elevated grade. And due to the fact the driveway width cannot be wider than the six meters per the bylaw, this area should be landscaped. Grass is not appropriate, as it would look out of place, and people would simply park on it. It was therefore a no-brainer with us and the landscape team to incorporate some small growing shrubs and mulch. So according to engineering department, we now have to rip all these perfectly good plants out, redo the irrigation, and install grass in an area where it does not belong. There's absolutely no benefit to the district in doing so. We're now faced with this decision as to whether to abandon our deposits, which range to about $6,500, or rehire our landscaper to redo the boulevard to what can only be described as a lesser standard. If we do abandon our deposits in that amount, would Suk stop re-landscape, or would our deposits be simply absorbed into the general coffers? Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you very much for the pictures and for providing that perspective on this. I'm a bit stuck on what to do with this, but perhaps if Mr. Schaefer can communicate back to the engineering team just the will of council tonight, and just our desire to look at other, other options that are just sod, I think that would be of benefit to everyone. Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, I, I took some quotes out of the subdivision and development standard bylaw related to landscaping, and I've got a direct quote, "Grass or landscape area must be reinstated to the edge of the sidewalk within the right-of-way." So would this qualify as a landscape area, sounds like? So I think that's verbatim from the, from the bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Bateman. I'll call you up again if, just want to hear if there's any other first-time speakers. Are there any first-time speakers on the agenda tonight? Come back up and reintroduce yourself, please. It's just the way things go online. Thank you.
No worries. So Michael Chagnier, Mars Construction Management. So specifically speaking, we are completed, we have final occupancy. We're now asking for the refund of our building deposits and our highway use deposits, which are separate. And when we had engineering department come out, they basically said, "We're not releasing your deposit under bylaw 404, schedule three, section 25, that reads, 'The remainder of the boulevard is to be landscaped with sod and trees per schedule eight, street trees.'" The pictures I provided show you that, that 1.2 meter from the edge of the sidewalk up to my property line cannot be, like, I could put grass there, but I mean, that's not manageable for a homeowner of them that I'm trying to provide this. I'm trying to provide mulch and shrubs in an elevated graded area that is easier maintenance than grass. How would you cut that? Some of the pictures are hard to see, but there's some, you know, some rock retention there with, with boulders. It just isn't feasible, and it's a lesser standard. I'm trying to provide a nicely landscaped product in Suk. And so they're saying they refuse to release my deposit, which is $4,000 on one project and $2,500 on the other. So that's $6,500 engineering won't release, because they want me to rip this all out and put grass there. So that's kind of why I'm here, and I think Herb was speaking to the same effect. I'm just taking it too close to home onto my properties that I've recently built, and I'm trying to sell locally. And again, with the prices coming down, I've created a very nice product, I, I believe, and I'm being punished for it when I'm, I'm like, providing irrigation to the, you know, I'm, I'm providing irrigation and landscaping on the Suk Boulevard of the right-of-way that these owners would maintain, as opposed to not putting it on the boulevard and putting the irrigation on my property line, that, that grass would just die anyways. This will allow to thrive and, and go long-term.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarity. Mr. Schaefer, do you have a way of looking into that?
I can certainly discuss that with the engineering department, Your Worship. I, I just, you know, wanted to reemphasize that the people who work in the engineering department are bound by, by law and policy. And it's, isn't this a refusal, I wouldn't imagine, that's done out of anything other than attempting to adhere to the directions received from council in their bylaws and policies.
Yeah, and I completely appreciate that that's the scenario. I just, the, I'll try to make a point of getting the other pictures, the ones that Mr. Haldane actually did send, like, they're very attractive. And just, I think we need to look for, like, mowing a piece like that is, I mean, the homeowner can easily just come and, and will dig out the sod and put shrubs there, because it'll be easier for them to maintain. I, that just seems really odd to me. So I think it, the flexibility, and hopefully what council has brought forward would just help us work through that. I appreciate the bylaw is what it is, but at the same time, it's the practical nature of things. Okay. Oh, I see some hands. Thank you for that. Council, I don't know who was first, so I'm going to start with Counselor LaGenes, because we haven't heard you speak tonight. So off you go.
Okay, thank you. I, I can't see who's in the room, but I'm assuming from what I've heard that there's no one from the engineering department there to answer questions. Is that right?
Be correct, yes.
Okay, yeah, I just, this, having some flexibility in landscaping makes a lot of sense to me, because I think the landscaping needs to fit with the topography, and do, I think, having some variety in landscaping is also a nice feature, so it just makes sense. And I know that's probably a little bit redundant, because we've been over this already, but just wanted to add my two cents worth.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McMath?
Because we don't have an ETA for getting the amendments 404 back to us, and this property owner is experiencing this now. I don't want it to get lost and, and left, and I appreciate what the CIO was saying, but I would like it to come back to us to review, or there be a consideration made that when we go through the review of 404, should the definitions change that that person receive their deposits back?
Yep. Thank you, Counselor McMath. Okay. Good, good. Okay, thank you, both of you. Sorry for missing you, but, but Counselor Bateman, it's just to feel the vision here. Okay, so I'm going to note Counselor St. Pierre.
I'm just wondering how to follow up on what Counselor McMath was, was saying. Wondering how to follow up on Counselor, Counselor McMath's comment of trying not to lose this and making sure that, and I understand there might be issues, because for example, we might have many people that are Michael's position and trying to hunt them all down. I mean, doing things retroactively gets very messy, and I know that for a fact. Having said that, what Counselor McMath is saying is reasonable. Is there any way that we can actually do this without too much complication? Because right now I don't see a path.
Mr. Schaefer?
And Your Worship, without undertaking the entire review, perhaps I can work with the director of engineering and, once he returns tomorrow, and try to get some information back to council prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting in September by email, so we can let you know what we've discussed and then have something for you on the next regular meeting of council, which is September 26th. Not September, earlier than that, but the September 26th. And short, short of that, though, I can't make any commitments on the, on behalf of the engineering department at this point. We can certainly look into it and let council know what we're, what we're thinking, and we'll try to communicate whatever those decisions are to Mr. Chagnier as, as well in the meantime.
Okay, thank you for that, and I appreciate that. It's just, I've never heard of this happening before. It's just, I've never heard of this happening before. I've heard where, you know, no landscaping was done, so certainly staff have held on to that because they, you know, this is what was done and this is what we expect you to do. But digging out shrubs to replace with sod just seems so, like undesirable, you know, when we're talking about the, you know, having beneficial insects and preserving water, you know, now we're talking about digging all this up, watering a sidewalk, you know, because of where the irrigation will hit, like it just seems so, so circa 1980, you might as well put in fake grass or something. I don't know, like I just, it's just odd. So I'm hoping that, I think all of council here just is seen from what I'm sensing around the table here and online is supportive of what was brought forward. We want something attractive and unique that captures the character that isn't so labor[656.46][656.46]intensive for homeowners to own and it's not just so boring, like grass is just a boring monoculture. And we can do better than that as, as we've seen even in our own, even in the landscaping our own, our own that we've done on Highway 14, the roundabout and the like. It's attractive and beautiful and doesn't need to be irrigated. So I think that's what we'd like to see. So if you could just kind of make that happen, I would just hate it if we start to receive letters where this is occurring now, like what are we trying to achieve with this by sticking to sod? This is odd. Sod is odd. Okay, I think you understand what we're trying to achieve here, so we'll move on. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on is our consent agenda, item nine. So this includes both 9.1 and 9.2, the correspondence block, as well as the recommendations that came from the July 18th meeting. So the most recommendation is that item 9.1, 9.2 be adopted by general consent, moved by Counselor Beto, seconded by Counselor St. Pierre. Any comments, Counselor Beto's? Counselor St. Pierre? Anything from anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, please? Anyone opposed? Counselor McMath is opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Getting into reports, we're at item 10.1, which is the Climate Action Committee Recommendations. So who will be introducing these recommendations? Counselor Bateman, is it?
Yeah, I guess I should as the council's liaison to the Climate Action Committee. So at our June 30th meeting, we made three recommendations. And they are in front of you tonight. I don't think the first is any surprise to anyone that the Climate Action Committee, which has been discussing the need for Climate Action Coordinator at the district, would again make this recommendation as one of, at the last hurrah, this is the last opportunity to bring forward recommendations for this committee. And the motion, which I wrote, and you can tell judging by the length of it, right? Sorry. But it was, it was important to capture exactly what our interim Climate Action Coordinator had contributed during her very brief nine month spell with the district. So that's captured there. It then moves into a recognition that the district does intend to hire a community development coordinator to produce, to replace Sue Welke, who left us coming up to a year ago now, I think. And that that position will have a significant climate action role to play. And at the same time, we at the Climate Action Committee recognize that this climate action plan, which we've approved in principle, to just reiterate that, in principle, that has, has a, a lot of moving pieces that, that we at the Climate Action Committee believe need to be coordinated. Maya Carlesfeld made a very good point that at that June 30th meeting, that in the whole of organization approach that the district is taking to low carbon resilience, every, every staff member is a kind of mini climate action coordinator, given that they're, they're looking at the work they're doing through that green lens. Yet at the same time, we on the committee believe that having a, an individual who was coordinating, cheerleading, keeping things on track, ensuring that the district is fully participating in available regional, provincial, and federal programs would, would make good sense. And at the same time, we recognize that these recommendations are systematically being forwarded for consideration to the next council. So we would be, I believe, I know, speaking for myself, I'd be happy to see it move forward for full and proper consideration by the next council.
Okay, but just for clarity. Well, yes, because it's all the whereas clauses is all, so sometimes I trip over those. Like this sort of, this doesn't say though to the next council, it's different than the committee, the whole recommendations. So, oh, your microphone's off.
Yeah, we need to make a new motion tonight to follow the staff report, which does note should cap, council wish to move forward with these recommendations, they should be referred to the next council for their consideration as all other committee recommendations were on June 25th, 2022. So I would be happy to make a motion regarding this, this first climate action committee motion. Down somewhere, yeah, it's the, the council refer, and in fact, this would apply to all three of the, the recommendations tonight. So perhaps I should wait until all three are.
Okay, I just see some hands, there's just some questions, so let's just, we'll just, I'll come back to you on that, okay? Counselor Beto's?
I'm really bewildered by this. We just gone, we just went through this in great, great detail at the committee, the whole, and we just ratified it to the committee, the whole, that, that we're going to send it to the next council without any recommendations. And then now we're revisiting again and I'm not clear as to why, we've just decided on this issue. We had a great debate on it and I think it was well thought out. And then it's just like, well, no, we don't like that answer, we're going to come and try another one. And we talked about the Climate Action Coordinator and just, and the end result is that we said that we'll accept it in principle and which is good and that we would refer it all to the next council. And that, that was a decision made by council that was voted on. And now we're looking at it again to go against that decision and make, make some of these decisions now, which we debated on not making it now and leaving it to the next council. So I am getting a little confused about this, where we're going with this.
Okay, fair. Mr. Schaefer, then I'll go to Counselor St. Pierre.
Again, Your Worship, committee reports come forward as a matter of course. And we as staff are not going to withhold a report that accounts, a committee of council has forwarded to council. Counselor Bateman's point is taken, as is Counselor Beto's point, that this was referred at the last committee of the whole to the next council. It could be argued by staff or others that having it on here is a moot point, that the decision's already been made. However, we're not in a position to simply withhold a report from a council committee. So that's why this committee report is on the agenda, just to answer Counselor Beto's question. We can't take that report and toss it simply because, unless we were directed to do so by a recommend, a motion of council. So it had to appear as the note says that, you know, these first and third committee recommendations are informed by the terms of the climate action plan, which was endorsed in principle on July 18th. And if council wishes to move forward with any of the above recommendations, they should refer to the next council. So a motion to do that might be the motion that's in order, which I think was where Counselor Bateman was going.
Okay, can I just clarify though, because I was away and I'm in catch-up mode now, is that the recommendation though, from the committee of the whole, is the climate action plan, which is different than what, does not necessarily include all of this. Like these are additional items that the Climate Action Committee had worked on. So there's kind of two separate pieces here. There's the, the, the plan, which, which is endorsed in principle, implementation by the next council, but these are other pieces that the committee had worked on that they're bringing forward and that's why they're separate.
That, that's correct. And the, did July, or the June 25th motion that council refer all committee recommendations to staff for presentation to the new council, I believe applies to these motions as well.
Okay, I see, okay, right, okay. Okay, but then procedurally, then that's already in place then? Like all committee recommendations are going to the next council?
I guess if, even if, sorry, if I have before, thank you, Your Worship.
Sorry, point of order, I have my hand up.
Sorry, Counselor McMath, I see you there. Counselor Beto's, I'm going to go to Counselor St. Pierre first actually, because I did acknowledge him after Mr. Schaefer, and then I'll go to Counselor McMath and then Counselor Beto's. Sorry about that, Counselor St. Pierre.
I'm just confirming an understanding that I have and that's that the future council, whoever they may be, has full control over the budget. Is that correct? Okay, then this particular recommendation has absolutely no weight whatsoever. It really doesn't. We're asking a future council to commit to hiring a full-time climate action coordinator. We can't do that. We cannot actually put something into the budget or hold the next council to our decisions as far as I know. They can do what they want. So I don't think we can actually do this. I think what we can do is do what we've done is support the climate action plan being considered in the budget process that's being begun by staff and which would include things like a climate action coordinator. We can totally do that because that's actually direction to staff, start preparing for a budget in the future and present it to council. But we cannot actually tie the hands of future council. So I don't think we can actually go forward with the first, the first resolution period. I don't think it holds any weight.
Counselor McMath?
Are we just able to move to receive for info because it's, these pieces are getting redundant? And so it, if there's, I see like one is an additional piece that perhaps is not listed within the details of the cap, but that can be included in staff's presentation and nothing else further needs to be done?
Sorry, can you repeat that last piece here?
These motions are redundant because we have them through the cap. There is only one where there's a presentation that's mentioned that I don't think is captured in the climate action plan. So can we just remove, excuse me, move to receive for info the Climate Action Committee's recommendations and that the additional component of the presentation be included in staff's presentation to the upcoming council?
Okay, I did say I would go back to Counselor Bateman for a motion, so, but I, I understand what you're saying there. Yeah, okay. Counselor, I'm going to go to Counselor Beto's, you wanted to speak, then I'll go to Counselor Bateman.
Oh geez, I, I just pick off one, one thing about the full-time climate action coordinator. That was in, that was in the recommendation that we dealt with, that was put to the, the new council. And again, it has to be funded and by budgeted. So to come back to it, well, we've already dealt with it and then look at it again with no budget, it is redundant. And I'd have to go along with like Counselor McMath is, let's just receive this as information. I don't want to receive it.
Just the way that I see this, and maybe someone can correct me though, is the reason why this is in here is because the province has put out the new CARIB funds. I don't know what, I don't remember what they're called now. And that's where it isn't, like it's, it's funding from the province specifically for a local government climate adaptation and mitigation and not a taxation item because it's funds coming through the province. So that's why I think sort of what, as I read this, is that the climate committee is saying, okay, because this funding tool has been made available, you should access it to do the posting and get on with it because the funding is there and it's not necessarily a budget like that. Fund would have to use specifically for this purpose. It couldn't be used for paving roads or sidewalks or other uses. And so that's why it's the case of, okay, given that the stream of funding now has come live, you should access it, get the posting, get it going. And that's, the Climate Action Committee feels that would be the best use or some of the use of those funds through their deliberations. And that's where it isn't necessarily a budgetary piece because we couldn't use that funding to hire, say, another RCP officer or anything else because it's specific. It's like our COVID relief funds have a specific element to it. And that's why it's here. It's not necessarily part of the next budget per se, right? Yeah, okay, Counselor Bateman?
So you're, you're right about all that. It's, it's the DC Local Government Climate Action Program and Suk will receive $135,000 annually for the next three years through the end of 2025. And that's, that's being spent specifically on climate action initiatives. And it's a very broad range. It can be staffing, it can be programs. I think it's unfortunate redundant came up as a word that was being repeated a few times. I think this first motion related to the Climate Action Coordinator, that is, the Climate Action Coordinator is not mentioned in the climate action plan at all. It was presented by our interim Climate Action Coordinator as her, as she said, it was her mic drop, right? So she, she presented and she left the room and the left the district and is now working at CRD and may she live long and prosper and retire happily at age 58, as she wants to do, right? So she, so we now have this big yawning gap in, in delivery of community development[1601.49][1601.49]/ climate action. So really, Counselor St. Pierre, you know, we're, we're not recommending that this person be hired, we're, we're referring these recommendations along with the other eight that I mentioned earlier from other committees to the new council. They'll get a stack and it'll be up to them to, to shred or, or follow or whatever. So yeah, I like the looks of this current motion. I'd be happy to move that. I think Counselor McMath has her hand up though.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor McMath for quite, for, I see your hand there and then I'll come back to you for a motion. Counselor McMath?
Those, that funding that we're discussing, so one of the pieces where the timing is getting awkward is because it's not part of the climate action plans list as Counselor Bateman states, how is it, how has it become the priority if it's not included or encapsulated within that plan? So if that funding can be used for multiple items, like where, where are we getting the direction that that's the number one priority? Because like on, if we are playing like the devil's advocate here, that money, that funding could be used towards a list of items within that rather than the lump sum going to a staff member that's in the role of, words are escaping me, but for that one position.
I see, Counselor Bateman?
Well, yeah, I would hope exactly that kind of conversation would happen with the new council where they're looking at, at the, at the organizational chart, looking at the yawning gap of the Community Development Officer, looking at the climate action plan and thinking, do we also want to support it through additional staffing? Or do we want to take that money and use it, as you say, for, for items on, on the, the 25 action items? So I think it'd be a really good conversation for that new council to have.
Like, so do we need these motions for that to be part of the conversation for the next term or?
You know, having sat here for four terms, any input that you would receive from the outgoing council, I think is, is good to have. I mean, I, I came in where there was nothing and you're just sort of reading agenda minutes. There was no webcasting, you know, trying to get up to speed. So I think in some way, providing some, even if it does look like, oh, they've done this twice, I think it just cements that, maybe not cements, but it just sort of says that, look, this was obviously very important to a particular committee and all of the work that they've done and they've done it in this way. I like, they'll either read it or they won't. I don't see if it's the same or duplicate. It just shows, at least there's something, there's some intel coming forward. Counselor St. Pierre?
Sorry, just for clarity, so in your, in your opinion or Counselor Bateman's opinion, without these motions, the next Sorry, just for clarity, so in your, in your opinion or Counselor Bateman's opinion, without these motions, the next term will lose this information? Because it's not caught within the Climate Action Plan?
I don't think they would lose it. I think it's the case where, you know, obviously our staff are here and will be providing like fulsome reports to an incoming council, just as we received. Uh, but we didn't have the benefit of the Climate Committee because the one that I chaired got thrown out, so. At least there's some groundwork here that would be presented. Ms. Mushada, and then I'll go to Counselor La Genes, and then over to Counselor St Pierre. Sorry, it just, I haven't heard from Counselor La Genes. Go ahead.
From a staff perspective, we would like council to make this motion so that it doesn't get lost when we are, because all of these motions get tracked in our software. So when we can look for, refer to the new council, all of these particular ones will come up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor St, uh, Counselor La Genes and St Pierre, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna move the motion on the screen, because I think there's no harm in doing that.
Okay, I was going to go back to Counselor Bateman for the motion as he was the liaison, so. Thank you. Uh, I just want to recognize Counselor St Pierre has some questions. So Counselor St Pierre.
I don't agree with the motion as it stands, because I think it loses the second, uh, recommendation.
Okay, we don't have one on the floor yet.
As written on screen.
I know, but it, nothing's been moved yet.
Okay, then I'll continue what I was gonna say, which is that. At this point in time, it'd be extremely good for us to actually have that delegation to describe this particular society, because it may actually inform future budgetary considerations, including the use of the monies. At this point in time, we actually have a communication coordinator. We potentially have a communication, sorry, a community development person that might be extraordinarily good with climate. So we have two staff people plus a large number of staff working under the L C R lens, as noted. I would like to see some capacity building potentially happen. It might be interesting to see. What would happen with activating the Climate Action Plan by using some of this money to put a coordinator into a society? That would actually work at a community level with capacity building. But if we start, if we don't even listen to the delegation, we don't, staff doesn't have that to work with. Uh, we don't necessarily know that that's something that they might want to prioritize. I think it's important that we actually have that delegation and not simply take this information.
The delegation. Okay, okay, thank you. Counselor Bateman.
Well, yes, there there are three recommendations. Uh, that's the first. Maybe the second one can come up on screen. Oh, it is up on screen. Dear me. Yeah, so the the key resolution there i- is that, um, suit council schedule a committee of the whole opportunity for the Climate Action Committees. Elizabeth Lang and Shandell Holden to explain how a commu- community development, climate engagement society would serve, support. And enhance climate action initiatives by the District of Sook.
Okay.
Concern there, I just add, is that there's just one more committee of the whole prior to the election and.
We don't have one at all.
We don't have one at all. Okay.
Yep, that's correct. There is no committee of the whole opportunity prior to the election. So again, I think this would just naturally fall to the next council if the recommendation is made.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. That council, I move that council receive the report for information and refer all three recommendations of the Climate Action Committee to staff for presentation to the new council for their consideration.
So that's been moved. Is there a seconder, seconded by Counselor La Genes? Okay, on the motion, any comments, Counselor Bateman? Counselor La Genes?
Nope. No comment.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak to the motion? Okay, the only piece, though, that I am sort of looking at is, what I see here is a desire to keep work continuing. So it is the, the piece around the. The Climate Action Coordinator and use and accessing that funds. However, it's just given where we're at, starting that now, I don't. Sorry?
Um, funding does not arrive until. Till into the fall, considerably, I think.
I believe so.
Yeah, so that's on October, so it it would be timely there. Okay, Counselor Betos?
Yeah, I don't have a a big headache with this. It's just that the one hundred and thirty-five thousand, I think that's the figure that I heard. Um, again, it's not entirely for Climate Action Coordinator. In in talking with the, our our C A O, Nora McKinnis. Uh, we talked about the Economic Development Coordinator having some roles, uh, for the Climate Action. They do a two-barrel job, and that that was his wish. To us, and we we endorse that, and I'm sure some of that one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars could be to offset that. So I don't, I don't have a problem, uh, with that. Um, but I just want to make entirely sure, I think Counselor McMath made that too, the one hundred and thirty-five thousand is for climate. Programs or or anything that goes under that, and maybe you can plant a tree or two would be nice. But, uh, so I I will support the motion, but, uh, I thought, I thought that was well said in the last one. So if it's just duplication and redundancy, uh, I don't, I know, Counselor Bateman doesn't like that word. But if we're two things saying the same thing, my understanding is that this is exactly what we said to do last time. So I don't mind saying it again. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call a question then. All those in favor? Any opposed? Counselor McMath is opposed, so that's unanimous. Okay.
Sorry.
Ten point two.
Way to order. It was not unanimous.
No, oh, sorry, I meant it carried with Counselor McMath opposed. Okay, it's it's hot in here. Ten point two, uh, this twenty-second. Twenty twenty-two second quarter financial operating budget.
Uh, thank you, worship. I I don't have a formal PowerPoint presentation to go along with this report. It's just as councils started to see in twenty twenty-one, um, staff are providing quarterly, uh, financial reporting to council and the public. To, so they will have an update on where we were, where, pardon me, uh, where we are at in, um. Our annual cycle and comparing budget to actuals. So this report is up to, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And as seen in kind of prior reports, we're pretty much on target with where we should be. Um, overall, uh, revenue and expenses or, um, expenses are at forty-seven percent, um, for the year. Uh, we're halfway through the year, so so that's a good metric for finance staff to be at, um, in reviewing. Um, I won't go into into details of all of these line items. I'll leave it for council if you have any specific questions. Um, but in reviewing the department-specific reports, any overages that are more than fifty percent of the budget being spent at this date. Um, can be explained due to one-time, like, insurance premiums that are received once a year and get posted during that month, but are for the full year. So that that costing will level out as the year progresses here. Um, couple items I wanted to point attention to was the grants, um, as seen by the totals there. Grants have definitely been our friend in the District of Sook here and will continue to be. As we work to implement some of these very expensive, uh, master plans. Um, the latest grants, the two latest, um, grants that the district has applied for are Charter's Road Active Transportation for just under six million dollars. I'm hoping to hear, um, early, uh, next year on our hopeful, successful, uh, receipt of that grant. That's a hundred percent funding for charters, and we'll provide some much-needed, um, upgrades to that, uh, quarter. Uh, the other grant, um, that we, the district has applied for on behalf of the, uh, Sook Homeless Coalition would be the Strengthening Communities, um, Sook Homeless Coordination Project. So staff are just, um, that is in current review with U B C M, uh, right now, and we are just waiting for formal confirmation on the success of that grant. Uh, with fingers crossed. Uh, the other piece to to point out is obviously, um, a couple days early, but, um. July fourth was property tax due date, so some stats and information is provided to council on, uh, where the twenty twenty-two property tax year ended. Uh, nothing at this stage that is causing any great concern with as far as taxes collected and outstanding properties. Um, additional, uh, forty-one additional homeowners have applied to defer their taxes, which further highlights the value of that program and that the province makes that available. Uh, this year as well was year two of the homeowner grant program being, um, run by the province. And, um, it definitely was running smoother than, uh, prior years, and, uh, reception staff assisted some of the elderly residents of Sook. Um, as we have done in prior years to help ensure their homeowner grant was filed on time. And, uh, the last attachment on the, uh, report is an update on all of the twenty twenty-two capital projects. A status update and budget-to-actual comparison has been provided, and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Gray, for that report. Um, I appreciate just how you've itemized it at all. Itemized it all so that we can see what's happening and why. I just provides that clarity also on, you know, things like when bills are payable and like and where we're tracking, so very thorough. Thank you. Uh, I'll leave it at that. For me, any questions for Ms. Gray? Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, so through you to Ms. Gray, are are you, are you pleased with the, with the tax, um, that you're at eighty-two point eight percent this year?
Uh, correct. Uh, yes, I'm looking at prior years. It's not, anything over eighty percent is where we usually sit at July fourth. Uh, or whatever the due date would be, depending on the year. So so, yeah, there's no cause for concern for the slight dip in collections. And, um, you know, for me, the real important number would be the number of properties in the delinquent status, because those would be at the risk of tax sales. So, uh, there, there's a limited number of properties on par with prior years, and as I stated, staff will work to, with the property owners with delinquent taxes. Um, and to do everything we can to help them get their property out of tax sale status, which would happen on the last Monday of September.
Yeah, and I agree with the mayor that this is, you know, for the pack freaks out there, it's it's all here. Uh, and it's wonderful to see how much the district is doing all these, uh, design, um, on, design, uh, progress on. On these connector roads. Um, I was curious about the Whiff and Spit Master Plan. I know an R F P went out for that. Do you have any, has that successfully been?
Um, through your worship to Counselor Bateman, I don't know the answer to that at this time. It it closed in mid-July, so, um. I, it's only been a couple weeks. I I would presume staff, uh, the park staff have met to review it. Um, but I can certainly provide a email update before September, um, once I can connect with the park staff.
Okay, so the recommendation is that council receive the twenty twenty-two second quarter financial operating report for information. Moved by Counselor St Pierre, seconded by Counselor Betos. Any discussion items? All those in favor? And any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Counselor McMath needs to return to work, so perhaps if you would like to sign off now, Counselor McMath, thank you for your contributions. And, uh, just so we capture that, you don't have to disappear.
Yeah, thank you so much. I have to go back to my makeshift.
Okay, take care and be well. And we'll move into our bylaw section now, when first one up, eleven point one is the checkout bag bylaw amendment. Over to staff, please.
Thank you, worship. So as noted in the report, the bylaw became active or came into effect on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. And, uh, staff did receive a significant number of calls, providing feedback on the bylaw in the range of forty-plus calls. Um, one specific one that seems to make sense is that the local print company. When they provide their customers with their print documents, they aren't necessarily, um, a good, um. Option to be using a re- or a reusable bag. They either don't fit, or it doesn't protect from water, those sorts of things. So, and we already have an exemption for newspapers that are delivered, so that one seemed to fit along with that one. And then the second one was the charging for paper bags provided in restaurants, specifically drive-through, takeout. Those sorts of things, again, where a reusable bag isn't necessarily conducive. Uh, for food safe reasons, they're not allowed to receive the reusable ones through a drive-through window. And again, may or may not provide protection from the weather elements. Uh, so there is an amendment bylaw in front of council for first, second, and third reading to that effect.
So I have a question. Now I'll go to Counselor St Pierre. Is just on the fast food item, um. Is, like, french fries are loose items, so. You know, and I agree with with this amendment for sure, but I guess in some cases. Because like if you order french fries, they're not all packaged, they're, they fall out. So would that not fall into the exemption section where section three doesn't apply to small paper bags used to package food items?
I wouldn't say so. They do come in a container.
So I would not say that. Fry, like even a big fry, like they're, like, they're in a, they're in, you know, like, they're, they're loose, so I have a weakness for these things. So I'm like, I've never seen them in a closed, like, they're in a. Like a cone.
Yeah.
Right? So you'd sort of think that they're loose, just like loose candies, but. Maybe this will just help clarify best for everyone.
I think it's gonna be resolved with the amendment anyway.
Fair enough. Okay, I just think the, yeah, okay. Counselor St Pierre?
I was just curious about the comparison of the newspapers, which I assume are wrapped in plastic to keep them safe from the rain. And I would assume that a print shop could actually put things into a manila envelope, which would actually make more sense, uh, for basically protecting their documents and what they're putting out. Uh, do we know if they're actually wanting to use plastic bags for, for copies? Because it just seems weird.
It would be some sort of, um, weather protective material, but I do know that the Sook News Mirror has. Um, got new material. They aren't specifically using a plastic bag. I don't know if you noticed it recently, but it's a very thin. And I assume degradable product that they are packaging the newspapers for home delivery in. And assume that it would be something similar with the local print shop. They are supportive of, you know, the environment and reusable bags where possible, but sometimes it just doesn't make sense for them.
Thanks. Counselor Betos?
Yeah, I I just have a sort of specific question about a restaurant that traditionally has been handing paper bags with french fries in, for one. And now they're charging twenty-five cents. Will they still be able? They haven't changed from plastic. They always were paper, and now they're charging twenty-five cents to put your food in, which they did before. So will this be covered under that, or can they still charge twenty-five cents?
And, I mean, I suppose they can charge twenty-five percent, twenty-five cents. That would be up to them, but there would not be a requirement to do so under the bylaw.
Okay, because right now they are saying it's the bylaw that's making them do that. So if we pass this, I can talk to them and say, no, the bylaw doesn't require. Okay, all right, I can handle that. Thank you.
We would just need to wait till adoption, but if we have some way of messaging out that. Look, you know, we're, we here, and I get that from, you know, having worked at McHappy Day, I can see how that would not be. An easy piece to accomplish, uh, you know, but I, I didn't see it, um, before, because they seem like loose food items. And it wouldn't have come into effect, but I guess it's just how people read, and then there's signs up. The other weird one that has come up is that there are some businesses that are like, no, we're not gonna stock any bags at all, and it's the District of Sook's fault. Like, they're not even selling their own printed bags, so. And they're, they're pointing to the checkout, but other businesses either have. Like, it's good marketing to have your logo printed on the bag, and all of them before would sell said bag for a dollar or more, depending on the size. But now they're refusing to stock any bags at all, so I didn't see that, and I. I don't know that it's across the board in Sook or particularly one particular business, but, um. I don't appreciate their sign in the window, because they could also have bags if they looked at their customers' best interest and have bags available for purchase. But maybe they don't want their logo out there, so I guess that's their business decision to make. Anyway, Counselor La Genes, thank you.
Yeah, I'm on the, um, the drive-through bags. Um, the, this, um, this, um, bylaw that we're seeing here that was part of the agenda package. I don't see, uh, drive-through services in the list of exemptions. Um, so is that, is this the original bylaw, or is this the amended bylaw?
Through your worship to Counselor La Genes, there are two bylaws, uh, attached to the report. The first one is a one-page amendment bylaw that states not withstanding section. that states not withstanding Section Four, a business may provide a paper bag to a customer free of charge if it is provided as part of a drive-through, take-out, or delivery restaurant service.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so we would have both together. Council Bateman?
Yeah, I'd like to move the council give first, second, and third readings to the Checkout Bag Regulation Amendment bylaw number eight-six-six, eight-two-one-dash-zero-two, twenty-twenty-two.
Moved by Council Bateman, seconded by Council Saint Pierre. Any comments, Council Bateman?
Well, I just think this is a really good example of a new bylaw rolls in. It was May twentieth or so that it was, and here we're responding very quickly, catching one of those oversights using the District of Sanich's best practice here to amend the bylaw to make it work.
Comments, Council Saint Pierre? Thank you. I received about twenty phone calls and messages myself, so it's about sixty since, and they're still rolling in. So thank you for catching this.
And it's just the one restaurant, as I understand it, that's doing this. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and one other business as well that is selling all assortment of things that you really do need a bag to transport in, but they're refusing to stock any bag. It's odd. Anyway. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, going on to eleven point two, the Soil Removal and Deposit bylaw. The recommendation is that council adopt the bylaw cited as Soil Removal and Deposit bylaw number eight-sixty, twenty-twenty-two. Moved by Council Betos, seconded by Council Bateman. We still have quorum. This is all here, but been before us. It's adoption. All those in favor, please? Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, eleven point three is the fees and charges. So again, for adoption, that council adopt the bylaw cited as Fees and Charges Amendment bylaw number eight-six-five, seven-five-two-dash-zero-six, twenty-twenty-two. Moved by Council Bateman, seconded by Council Betos. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? That's unanimous as well. There's no new business. So we're looking to thirteen point one, which was polled by Council Saint Pierre, which is currently not in the room. So maybe we'll move to any verbal reports and we'll come back. Is everyone okay with that? Okay, I don't want to just skip it entirely, but just remind me when he comes back. Apurts, Council Betos?
Yeah, I just, on your behalf, I attended the Suk Fine Arts, a wonderful occasion. The hors d'oeuvres were just super. And I didn't mind the wine as well, but we're very well done, and we have a lot of very talented artists in our midst. And it was a good time around. The other one is, I'll just mention a bit of a shout out, and I hope I get the name right. Grace's Garden is the church's garden? Is it Grace or Graces? Grace Gardens. Anyways, I happened to be in the food bank getting ready for my rent-to-run, and they brought in a shipment from that garden. It was magnificent, all the stuff they brought in. So I just want a little shout out for them and the food bank for getting it to the people that need it. It was pretty neat to see. That's it for me.
Thank you, Council Betos. Council Bateman, Council Saint Pierre?
Council Betos for driving it up to Port Brenford year, week after week. Yeah. Okay. I'll take it away. So yesterday, there was the, the district's thank you to the committees. That was at the Suk Museum, also a great spread, thanks to the Suk Lionesses. Should be good lemon squares that I took a couple home. And, yeah, it was, it was a pleasure to thank the Climate Action Committee members who were there for their work and hand them a certificate for their collection. I also attended the Sea Park Commission meeting as alternate director in your absence and was again able to pitch my idea of this co-venture with Sea Park and district on getting some recreation activities, and that'll be dealt with in the new year by the new commission. And finally, the Suk Homeless Coalition had its bi-monthly meeting in a couple of weeks ago, and our working group has now received the third draft of the strategic plan, which we spent nine months developing. And fingers are crossed, as Ms. Gray said, for a second year of funding to the Suk Shell Society from the Strengthening Communities Grant Program.
Council Saint Pierre, we're going to come back to the correspondence you pulled, so we moved on to reports. Nothing to report? Okay. Council La Genes, anything to report?
Yeah, I too attended the Suk Fine Art Show Artist Recognition Event and got to tour the, the exhibits, and I'm going to go back and, and do it again, because you can't possibly see it all in one, one showing. But just to the people who put on that event, it, it really is a world-class event, and I'm so grateful to them for putting Suk on the map as, as a real champion of the arts. And I think that after thirty-six years of hosting that show, I think it's time that we need to come up with a way to, to create a year-round upscale art gallery to allow our artists to display their, their works year-round. And also, the volunteer recognition event was, was a excellent little event. I'm sorry that more, more of our volunteers weren't able to make it, but I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the work that they've put in for us.
Okay, thank you, Council La Genes. So I'd just like to thank Council Betos for chairing meetings and covering off while I was away due to illness and then away on vacation. And also Council Bateman for filling in on as the alternate for the C R D meetings. Many of the C R D meetings are now recessing as well, and committee work has wrapped up as well. So there's, there may be an August board meeting, maybe one in September, and I think that's about it. A few commission meetings, though, throughout. I look forward to the Fine Art Show and getting down there, but you do need to make more than one visit to actually see everything, because it is beautiful. So I'm looking forward to that. And I will share that healthcare planning continues. The surgeon, I really want to acknowledge them for really taking this on. They've cleared a hurdle through the province and are moving on to the next phase. So there's a lot of, a lot of people dedicated, as well as our physician group, to expanding our healthcare services here, which we desperately need. So a lot of that work continues and is ongoing. There's several meetings set now throughout the summer as well to continue to work away on those, on that important issue. And then, yeah, I'd just like to share, I was in Alberta, and there's labor shortages and challenges, service delivery issues. We're not alone in that. As well as really interesting, you know, to see different initiatives, how different communities are looking to adapt to a changing climate. And it's sort of different depending on where you live, but what you see is quite phenomenal. And again, it's the nuances of each individual province and what we offer and what our challenges are. So anyway, it was all good. Air travel wasn't as bad as you may read, so if anyone is traveling, it's fine. Yes, my flights were canceled and changed several times, but the crew was there. They were great to work with. Luggage arrived. It was all good. So for the, I know we're hitting vacation time, so for those of you that are heading away, you know, it's, yes, Pearson seems to be a nightmare, but everything else seems to be okay. So happy travels, everyone. We are still in a pandemic, though, in connecting with family in Japan. Residents there are looking at fifth doses. They're quite overwhelmed with COVID and a really, and really impact of climate and what they're doing. So it's, it's it's just different. I also want to acknowledge the families that continue to take in folks from the Ukraine. I'm hearing many that have landed and then arrived, found employment, moved on, leaving those host families to take others to come in. So that's wonderful. So we're just going to, I'll leave it at that, and just back up a bit to the item that was pulled for correspondence from Council Saint Pierre, and that was the View Royals letter on the E N N Rail Corridor.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. So I brought, I pulled this from correspondence, because I feel it's actually extremely important in terms of the island. It's an advocacy piece, clearly an advocacy piece. But the more voices come together to basically ask the province and the feds potentially to step forward and protect this corridor, the better chance we have of actually having solid, sustainable transportation across the island for economic development, for transportation of goods and services for people, for all the rest. This is actually the backbone of the development of the island as a region and as a, as an area. And right now, we're looking at a short window of opportunity, after which many of these lands will actually no longer necessarily be available. They're going to go back to the indigenous people that originally owned. My understanding is there's room to negotiate, but there has to be a will to negotiate from upper levels of government, because it's not going to happen from the District of Suk. So it's really incumbent on us to step forward with people like Mayor, Mayor Screech in View Royal, and basically put our voices behind this to make it happen.
Okay, so I think we could send, we could send a letter. I think would probably be the best action item. There's probably a U B C M resolution. But in the meantime, we could send a letter off to our M L A and, and the ministers responsible for this decision, which are listed here. And both federally and provincially, I think. I don't know what other piece we could do. Go ahead.
I wasn't sure whether or not Mayor Screech might be asking other councils to make the same resolutions to do a joint submission to U B C M or not. And I'm not sure how that works. So I was going to leave that to you to maybe explain.
No, the deadline for U B C M resolutions has already passed, and so I don't know if it's done there or not, but because it's island, sometimes it's not provincial-wide, so it becomes an island-wide debate. So I think that's where that is kind of what we could do. I don't know what else to do. I mean, we do, when it comes to U B C M, we would vote on it, which is in September, but in the meantime, I'm just looking at what we could do. A V I C C is too late. It's too late, because that would be after the deadline, so it is now.
A letter.
Yep.
Okay.
So if we could work on something, maybe a motion then that council direct staff to draft a letter for the mayor's signature in support of the, for the rail, Island Rail Corridor, referencing the, the letter provided by View Royal.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Council Saint Pierre, seconded by Council Bateman. My screen went blank. I think we got it, right? I can't see anything now. Sorry, Council La Genes?
Yeah, I fully support this, actually. It's, it's something. Historically, that corridor has been an important part of our transportation network for one hundred and thirty-five years, and it absolutely will be in the future as growth continues, and it needs to be protected from development, so that it, we can maintain it as a transportation corridor.
Okay, good. So the motion's been moved and seconded. I'll call the question. All those in favor? None opposed? That's unanimous. And that brings us to a German, please. Moved by Saint Pierre, seconded by Council Betos. All those in favor? None opposed. Take care, everyone. Have a wonderful summer. We're not meeting now until September. Unless there's some emerging event where a special meeting gets called.
We have a special meeting on September the eighth, and then our next regular is September twenty-fifth.